Hello.
Hello, Mike.
Hey JP, how are you?
Good, how are you doing tonight?
Good, I just had to make sure the system worked for me.
Yeah, everything works. It's great when it works. Sometimes we have some difficulties, but recently it's been going pretty good.
Good.
All right, I think this could be a long one tonight. I think there's a lot of things going to be read into the record and stuff, but it'll go well.
Okay. I'm here, I might log out for a little while. I don't think my communication comes up for a little bit.
And all you need to do is just, you can shut off video and make sure your audio is off so that you don't get an echo back in there. And then when you're called upon, then just come up.
Okay, sounds good.
Click on video and your audio, okay?
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Evening, everybody, or is it morning? Seems like a blur. How's Ellen?
John, how are you?
You're okay, I haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah, it has been a while. Of course, I haven't seen very many people in a while. But now that we're vaccinating, maybe we can see a few people.
Let's hope so, soon.
Yeah, let's hope so.
Can I do a microphone check? I was supposed to be all online. Am I, can you hear me? Don't be laughing, Hattie.
Are we able to check in yet? There we go.
Commissioner Fisher, I was wondering, I thought you were going to have surgery today or is that next week?
Thank you, Commissioner Burden. My surgery was planned for today and it was postponed until next Wednesday. I came up with a positive COVID test.
Oh, no.
Friday, so I had to do a little bit of reorganizing in my schedule. So next week, hopefully with everything going well, we'll get that done on the 10th of March instead of the 3rd. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I'll be by with some bonbons when you have your surgery, Commissioner Fisher.
Give me a few days, you know how I am.
Are you having a total shoulder replacement, Jim?
Yes, Commissioner Soreich, one this month and then one probably in October. Thank you.
I feel for you, I had that done several years ago.
I don't want to hear no more, I'll go with the unknown.
Well, it looks like we're going to get this off on time and it looks to me like everybody's here. So I'd like to call the Butte Silver Bowl Council of Commissioners regular meeting for Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021 to order. Could we get a roll call, Commissioner Shaw?
Cindy, you're on mute.
We still can't hear you, Commissioner Shaw. It still has your microphone off, there you go. I think I could go forward and say we have 11 present, one absent. Please note that Commissioner Bill Anderson is excused for the night.
Is it on now?
Yes, okay.
There are too many microphones up here, sorry. It's not just the table. Okay, and you're correct, that is absolutely right. 11 present and one absent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. All right, now we'll go to the prayer. Commissioner Soreich, could you leave us in a prayer?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bowl, direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. Okay, our next order of business is the approval of amendments for the February 17, 2021 regular meeting. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes of February 17th, 2021.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote?
We're still working on getting it up here.
Okay.
Thanks.
I saw the poll up, but it was not for that. I take it. I'll try to slow myself down.
No, you're fine.
Commissioner Shaw, is there any chance you could send somebody from IT down to Mr. Cambridge's office? He's just having trouble getting, please.
Cambridge, Chief of Staff.
All right, can we have everyone vote? And then clerk, can we record the vote?
We have 11 yay and zero nay.
11 yay, zero nay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is items not addressed on the agenda today. We do have one, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. We have a finding of existing emergency to permit suspension of the rules to allow communication number 2021-111 to be added to tonight's agenda. In accordance with the provisions of Section 6 of Rule 6 of the Rules of Business of the Council of Commissioners of the City and County of Butte, Silver Bow, State of Montana, the council hereby finds that an emergency condition exists which requires that the council rules be suspended to allow this to be put on our meeting tonight. The reason for this suspension is as follows. Communication number 2021-117 is a communication from clerk and recorder Linda Sager Joyce regarding the 2021 special purpose district elections for volunteer fire department trustees. The communication advises the governing body that the 2021 elections for these volunteer fire department trustees were canceled as there were no contested races and therefore all of the trustees were elected by acclamation. Section 13-1-501 of the Montana Code annotated provides that following the write-in candidate deadline, which for this election was Monday, March 1st, 2021, if there are not contested races, the election administrator shall cancel the election and immediately notify the governing body of the local government in writing of the cancellation. In order to comply with all of the above, Ms. Sager Joyce is asking that this communication be added to the March 3rd agenda. This communication could not be submitted by the deadline for the March 3rd agenda since, as noted above, the deadline for write-in candidates was past the deadline for submission of communications to council. However, as the state law requires, Ms. Sager as the election administrator to immediately advise the council of the cancellation of an election and in order for those volunteer fire department trustees elected by acclamation to fulfill their two-year terms, Ms. Sager is requesting that communication 2021-117 be added to tonight's agenda and acted upon. Based on that, I, we find that an emergency exists which requires that we add this to tonight's meeting. So at this time, I move to approve the suspension of the rules to consider placing communication number 2021-117 on the agenda at the March 3rd meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and to approve suspension of the rules to consider placing communication number 202117 on the agenda and second it. Is there anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, could you please record the vote?
We have 11 yay and zero nay.
11 yay, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to items, oh, I'm sorry, the chief executive's report. Today, we have some, you know, some really positive news going forward with the COVID numbers, COVID vaccines. So just kind of read and let everyone know where we're at. For the first time in the number of weeks, we've dropped down to below the 25 per 100,000 for the first time in a while. We had 22 of, per 100,000, and then our positivity rate is at 6.2%. So if we keep that trend for the, for the next two weeks, we will be moving into the, to easing up the restrictions in Butte Silver Bow per the restrictions and the guidance that was given to us by the, the health board. Yesterday, we had a great clinic on the booster administration. As we had 1,560 booster doses administered, that means that people are fully, are getting fully vaccinated, 522 of them were Moderna, 1,038 were Pfizer. And then, and then just today, we administered another 1,130 first vaccines in Butte Silver Bow. Our vaccination clinics have been amazing. And by the count, that puts an estimated 13,539 total doses administered in Butte Silver Bow. 8,000, 8,012 first doses administered, 5,550, 527 individuals fully immunized. And so that puts doses per 100,000 at our, our population, 473.8, eligible population, 28.57. So we're at 28% of the population that's been vaccinated. So this is, that's, that's a fantastic, fantastic numbers that we have going forward. I take, I take it back, it's 28,576 are, are eligible for the doses. So that, that takes away the kids that are 18 and under and are, that aren't eligible. So I'm very proud of the, the work that our health workers are doing and the, the St. James Community Health Center, along with our health department and Southwest Community Health Centers, they're just doing fantastic work. Next on agenda, I'm just going to be real quick. I know that there's been many discussions about a lot of things that have happened recently and articles in the paper, one of which was the removal of a person off of a board. I wanted to address that directly. Everyone that is put onto a board signs a code of ethics policy and it is our job and everyone's job to make sure that that code of ethics is followed completely, it's signed off on. I know that sometimes people would think that some of it, sometimes when they speak, it's separate of where they are on the board. And that can be true if they're not speaking on items that were reflective of what a board had already made an action on and they're speaking towards that. And in their communication, that was directed at a board that they were a part, a part of. And so that was the reason then action was taken. I think it was pretty, pretty accurately documented in the paper today. And I think everybody was able to hear most of it last week, but also could read about it or look at it in the record. So I just want everyone to know that it, the responsibility that we take, all of us, when we represent Butte Silver Bow, no matter if it's a volunteer board, if it's on the Council of Commissioners, if it's chief executive, whatever it is, we are accountable for our actions. And so that we take that, that code of ethics very seriously. And so I want to make sure that everyone understands, I take it very seriously and I, I do not take it lightly, but I do not also regret the action that I took. But, so with that, we're going to move forward. I know we're probably going to have a little bit of a lengthy meeting tonight. Again, we want to make sure that we keep everything moving forward and, and just have a nice democratic process as we go through this tonight. So with that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, public comment on any items that are on the agenda tonight. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. We'll go to the phones and see if we have anything waiting. I have several letters to read into the record, but we'll go to the phones first and you need the microphone. Okay. You need this one over there? Okay, okay. Microphone switching. Hello? Good evening. Would you mind giving us your name and address for the record? Okay, Jennifer? Well, we, we're, you know, we won't be getting to your agenda item yet, Jennifer, until quite a while through the meeting here. So if you'll just, yeah, you can call back, you can listen in and we'll get to that point. It'll be when we get to the point of items to be read and acted upon. And we, but just hang in there and, and you just call in again, just like this, and that'll be perfect. Okay, you bet. Any other calls?
Commissioner Soreich had his hand up. Commissioner Soreich?
Commissioner Shaw, we couldn't hear that call whatsoever. So I don't know if we had a real tough, tough time hearing what the voice, the person was even saying.
Thank you for telling me that. We're, yeah, we had, okay, all right. Still getting this set up. That was Jennifer Mitchell. She just wanted to know how she would be participating a little later on in the meeting. So I just explained to her that she just needs to call in, listen and call in when her communication comes up. So that was not a comment. Are we all set this time? Are we ready to roll? Any other calls? Okay, there are no other calls, so I will begin reading the communications or the comments, I should say, that have come before us, starting with Bob Worley, 3405 Wharton Street, Butte. And you all can hear me, okay? Okay, great. Dear Commissioners, I would ask the Council of Commissioners to approve the request of applicant Jennifer Mitchell of 2509 State Street, Butte, Montana, Floral Park Edition, to tear down and remove the house at 2505 State Street, Butte, Montana, Floral Park Edition. This demolition has been held up by the Historic Preservation Council, HPC, and Mary McCormick, employee of Butte Silver Bow, as being a potential historic property should the Floral Park Edition ever be designated as a historic district. I believe that the owner of the stated property should be able to make the decision as to disposition or use of said property within reason. I do not want to see HPC have the authority to run roughshod over property owners in this area or any other areas in Butte. I have looked at the house for the curb and, and it is, in my opinion, not historical. It has a metal roof, non-matching windows, and modern brick in front. I am in agreement with the HPC and its director to protect historic properties in Butte, Montana. However, I believe area of properties should be contained in the uptown business area. I would hope the bulk of the efforts of the HPC would be north of the Northern Pacific Railroad and Depot near Front Street. HPC can use more common sense and present law in making historical decisions and not hinder development in our community. Don't hold property owners hostage. Let's help Butte grow as a thriving community where we all can earn a good living with our families. The next letter is from Jennifer W. Peterson, 2840 Edward Street, Butte, Montana. Dear Council, I am writing in regard to the above referenced house in its neighborhood, and that would be 2505 State Street. I have lived in the Floral Park Edition for soon to be 21 years. I knew this neighborhood was where I wanted to raise my children. I think most of people living in the FPA would agree it is family oriented, oriented and quaint with its eclectic mix of homes. There is a sense of pride with these older homes in the FPA. They are well taken care of and in the historic aspects are embraced. Maybe creating a historic district is a good idea to save what I feel is a lost art, building quality homes with quality materials and substantial character. I think what people don't understand is just because your home is listed on or eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, that unless you are applying for some government assistance such as SARDA funds, you can do what you want to do to your home. You don't lose your rights to your home. Having a home on the NRHP would be a great selling tool, especially coupled with an historic district. And in the end, isn't that what's important? To see one of these homes torn down because Ms. Mitchell wants a yard, because it encroaches on her property? I've seen encroachment of property and that ain't it. But I got, digress. Can we at least save the home from demolition? My sources tell me the inside is actually in very good shape, and now is the time for selling, as everyone knows. If one is patient, the right buyer will come along and save that beautiful cottage. Thank you for refusing to support demolition of 2505 State Street, Jennifer Peterson. Next is a letter from Brady Paul, Butte, Montana. To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter to express my opinion and concern over the current opposition of partially demolishing and restoring the Blue Range Building. As a resident of Butte, born and raised, I have complete respect for Butte history and absolutely love to see old historic buildings restored to their former glory. But I feel the HPC has overstepped their bounds in this situation. When you have a very reputable historic engineer, among others, label a building as unsavable, who are they to say otherwise? I feel their arguments are made with ignorance. As to my current knowledge, none of them have been inside the building to really evaluate and comprehend its current condition. Butte is such an amazing place with an enormous amount of potential for growth, but if the HPC is allowed to continue on with their uninformed tactics, how will Butte ever develop? My fear is that if the HPC is allowed to stop this buy-sell agreement, what does that do for our future investors? Who would want to have any part of this intimidation? I give Larry Hoffman and Stacks Motorsports major credit for everything they have had to go through over this. I am a 31-year-old female with a 14-month-old daughter and another child on the way. Butte is my home and I would absolutely love to remain here with my growing family and have the same opportunities for my children. I do have major concerns with Butte's future and to even have the idea of shutting down a very respectable business from growing is very discouraging to me. Butte history is very special and I have always enjoyed learning about it. But to be completely honest, I did not know what the Blue Range Building was until this all happened. Maybe that is ignorance on my part, but from my own inquiries of fellow Butte residents of all ages, I have received the same input. I am not saying that doesn't make the building what it is, but maybe it is not as historically significant to Butte as it is being argued as. With that, I feel you do not need a physical building to learn about history. I know now, I now know what that building was, and even if it was partially gone, it's not like that history goes away. Learn about it and teach about it. That is what Butte history is all about. I think the real plan for this building is being overshadowed by ill feelings. Why not sacrifice a small part of the building to save the majority? I feel that is a win for both an investor and a historian. The building and surrounding property will be cleaned up, a growing business will be able to continue to invest in Butte, and there will still be a piece of historical property to acknowledge. That is the best compromise you can get, and I feel that should be the focus. Sincerely, Brady Paul. The next letter is from Veronica Walker in Butte, to whom it may concern. My name is Veronica Ronnie Walker. I was born and raised in Butte, Montana. I've always been proud to call Butte my home. I have been an employee of Stacks Inc. for approximately 14 years. I can honestly say that Ed and Brian Stack are very hard workers who take pride in what they do. I have never worked for someone who has cared more about their employees and employees' families as much as they do. Since my employment with them, I have watched their business grow. With that growth, they have invested in employing more staff and improving their current facility. Stacks have always been willing to invest in Butte and make it a better place. While I have a lot of respect for Butte's history, I also am concerned about Butte's future. I believe the thing that makes Butte great is its people and not some broken down building. I'm afraid that if we let HPC have so much control over our town, it will drive our children, our future, away from Butte. Sincerely, Veronica Walker. Next letter is from Jake Darcy from Butte, to whom it may concern. I am writing this letter to voice my opinion over the ludicrous events that have been taking place over the last few weeks regarding the Blue Range Cribs Building. I feel that the HPC and Historical Preservation Society have overstepped bounds in both personal property rights and common decency. Since when does a third party have the right to just butt in on an agreement between two parties, whether it be person to person or a business attempting to purchase real estate to expand their operations? This building has been sitting This building has been sitting in less than desirable condition for my entire life. I attended elementary school, high school, and graduated from Montana Tech. For the record, I was born and raised in Butte, and I am 28 years old. During all the classes and lessons that I have attended in school that taught us about Butte history, never once was the Blue Range spoken about. We learned about the Dumas when learning about Butte's red light district and the tunnels that ran from the district to the business part of town. If this building is so historically significant, why is it that it took someone wanting to buy it and dismantle it for me to learn what it used to be? Additionally, why is it all of a sudden an enormous outrage? Nothing has been done regarding preserving the building in at least the 28 years that I have been on this earth. No disrespect to Mr. Hoffman, keeping a building this old just standing is a Herculean effort all on its own. If I was part of the Historical Preservation Society, I would be embarrassed. Your group didn't care about this building until someone was actually going to use the space for something good for the community, and now you finally care about it and are standing in the way of growth and for a locally-owned business and the town as a whole. Continuing my point of growth, I feel the amount of money that Stacks Motorsports brings to this community is much greater than just selling powersport equipment and employing residents of Butte. If you take into consideration everything else that goes into the recreational aspect of using a side-by-side, four-wheeler, or motorcycle, the cost doesn't stop at the purchase. When an individual or family use one of the machines purchased from Stacks, they have to get gas, food, and all the other things that a person will need when spending a day out on the trails. This money will most likely be spent in Butte, giving a not insignificant boost to the local economy. If Stacks Motorsports has more room for inventory, then there is more opportunity for the people of Butte to purchase their machines and spend money locally to go enjoy their purchase. In closing, I think that Stacks Motorsports should be allowed to purchase the building and do with it as they see fit. I believe that not allowing Stacks Motorsports to purchase the building will inflict unnecessary hardship on a local business as well as the local economy. If the Blue Range Cribs were so historically significant, the Historical Preservation Society would have been more proactive with it rather than reactive. Jake Darcy. Next is from Mary O'Rourke, 830 West Calina in Butte. I'm writing in regards to the recent historic preservation controversy regarding the Blue Range Cribs. I have the unique position of knowing both the Stacks and Peggy Guccione. I also know Larry Hoffman and the engineering firm he hired by reputation. It is a delicate balancing act to address historic preservation versus blight and community revitalization. Both Larry and Peggy have done exceptional work in restoring and/or replicating a number of historic structures. The Stacks have invested in the future of Butte and have deep roots and a deep appreciation for the history of Butte. It infuriates me that the HPC is dragging Mr. Hoffman through the mud in a smear campaign by questioning his intentions and integrity in the preservation of Butte history. The HPC has once again overstepped with scorch-and-burn tactics to force a divide in like-minded people. A reputable engineering firm gave an honest assessment of a building that has serious safety and integrity issues. From what I understand about Mr. Hoffman, he would have saved the building if the report was not so grim. In addition, the buy-sell agreement is legal and binding. By even suggesting that Mr. Hoffman listed, the HPC is suggesting he break real estate law. Unfortunately, parts of the building are beyond repair. If this building was so historically relevant, why didn't the HPC approach the seller previously? Rather than pit people against each other and try to force illegal action, the HPC should move to a proactive approach. By working with property owners, they can educate and be involved before decisions are made and contracts are signed. Mary O'Rourke. Next is a... Okay. Thank you. Next is a letter from Rose Gibbons in Butte, Montana. I'm writing this letter to express my concerns about the ongoing controversy regarding the Butte Historic Preservation Commission and some of the properties that they are attempting to save. My main concerns are regarding personal property rights and revitalization of Butte, Montana. I have been a resident of Uptown Butte for the past 30 years. This recent and ongoing HPC encroachment into personal property rights has me very concerned as a private property owner in Uptown Butte. At what point does saving every derelict building that happens to be old become more important than a person's private property rights? Because I own property in Butte, Montana, do I now forego any realistic expectation that the property is mine to treat as I see fit? With no acceptance of historic society funds and only my personal investment in the property, do I forego my basic ownership rights? Is the expectation that I can no longer leave it to a family member or sell it to a person of my choosing? Will I be forced to hire an HPC-approved real estate agent if I choose to sell my property? Or an HPC-approved engineer if I need to tear it down, tear down a very dilapidated building on my property? At what point is this encroachment on private property ownership rights going to be stopped? On the historic restoration front, we also fell in love with the historic architecture of Butte, Montana. However, the blight that exists in town needs to be dealt with to revitalize Butte. Butte is a small, working-class town with a limited amount of funds. There are many, many buildings that are in need of the HPC's assistance to restore. Buildings that are structurally sound, buildings that hold historic value and could be anchors of historic significance in the revitalization of our community. It is a waste of time, money, and resources to possibly have a potential investor that will save one or two derelict buildings while scaring off potential investors who will renovate multiple structurally sound historic buildings for the same investment dollars. Now with a floral park property, this group is attempting to stop a private property owner for doing as she sees fit outside of the historic district based on a potential for being historically significant. This group has overstepped their authority exponentially. Butte would be better served if this group came up with a master plan to identify historic significant buildings to assist in restoring and cataloging those salvageable versus derelict properties. Then resources could be redirected in a productive way rather than swooping in after decisions have been made and property owners have committed resources to address the issues on their private property. In light of the recent surge of interest of Butte real estate, do we want to send the message that at any time the HPC can make decisions regarding how you can invest or modify your property? We have an opportunity to reclaim many of our historic buildings and revitalize the entire town in the near future. We don't need another false start to only drive away potential investors from our community so that a small-driven group can make our town a museum for their elite friends. If we choose our battles wisely and we can continue to move forward in historic restoration, revitalization, and make Butte a place our children want to raise their families in with the opportunities to make that dream possible. Rose Gibbons. The next comment is from Kalista Rojeki. I live in the 1300 block of Missouri Avenue, Butte. I received the ownership of the house next to me. I was told I had to go through Mary McCormick to get approval to tear it down to build a garage. I don't live in any historic area, and I was given permission to tear it down. The man in the 1400 block of Missouri Avenue also got permission to tear the house down next to him. I tore mine down last year. What's the problem, Mary? Don't you believe in property rights? Thanks. Thank you, Kalista Rojeki. The next letter is from Judy Murphy, Butte, Montana. I would like to have it on record that I am in support of Jennifer Mitchell's request to demolish the house at 2505 State Street. I would like to address several issues. Number one, this is not a historic area. Number two, our historic district is Uptown Butte. Number three, this house is owned by the Mitchells, and they should be able to dismantle it if they choose, especially since it is in such poor shape and would be so costly to repair. Number four, they should not be required to have to sell it or remodel it if they do not wish to. And number five, if the preservation group wishes to save the house, then they should come up with the money to have the house moved and remodel it themselves. We need to build up and beautify Butte rather than go backward. There has already been times that permits have been granted and then parts of the permits not enforced, such as cleanup to be done and left undone, or sidewalks to be put in, and that has gone by the wayside. The Mitchells want to make their property better. That will enhance Butte. Thank you, Judy Murphy. The next letter is from Dan and Lou Greedy. Commissioners, we are writing about the demolition of 2505 State Street House. We live across the street and have a good view of this house and are definitely in favor of its demolition. It has been neglected for over 20 years and is an eyesore. Jennifer Mitchell owns this property and wants to demolish it and do landscaping. We will enjoy the view so much better when the house is gone. The neighborhood is not in a historic district and does not want to be in one. People in the neighborhood care for their properties, and it's a nice neighborhood the way it is. We believe as a property owner, Jennifer Mitchell has the right to do whatever she wants to her property, especially when it's for the good of the neighborhood. Dan and Lou Greedy. The next comment is from Will Kilmer, 2503 State Street. Dear Council of Commissioners, my name is Will Kilmer, and I am the next-door neighbor to the house of 2505 State Street. I am writing this email in support of the demolition permit submitted by the property owners/contractor. Having the house demolished would benefit me for a number of reasons. For example, the space between my house and the one in debate is comfortably close, uncomfortably close. It is very easy to look directly into both bedrooms of my house from each level of the house next door. Also, the houses next door is so close that it makes maintaining the east side of my home very difficult. I have also noticed a hole underneath the back patio that would have to be affecting the foundation of the home. After walking through the house, 2505, it was clear to me why the Mitchells would want to demolish the house. In order for them to make it livable, they would have to spend a fortune to even make it a reasonable rental property. The Mitchells have made it clear that they have no interest in being landlords, so I don't see how anyone would benefit from this house being saved. I have lived in Butte my entire life, and I respect the history that has been preserved here, but this house has no historic value. It seems unfair to me that the owners can't practice their rights to improve the property they own. The Mitchells have also talked to me about potentially buying some of the lot that the house now sits on. By doing so, I could extend my yard and be able to maintain my home more easily. Having the house demolished would be a positive impact for all the neighbors affected by the house. Thank you for taking the time to hear my thoughts and concerns. Will Kilmer. The next comment comes from Margaret Guccione, and she's in Butte. Dear Commissioners, I would like to make three major points with this comment. Number one, the owners of 56 East Mercury do have another option to sell their property. I have made a first-backup offer to purchase the property with the contingency that all three buildings are still present and an inspection of the buildings. The signed offer to purchase the entire property is attached to this letter to demonstrate that I am willing to put my money where my mouth is. It is my intention to mitigate all structural issues with at least the cribs portion of buildings and to transform it to a viable business hostel that would provide additional real estate tax income to Butte Silver Bow and to the Montana bed tax rather than empty space in front of a storage facility. To date, I have received the following responses. A, thank you for the offer, Peggy. Although it's not appreciably different than Stacks' offer, it is very refreshing to actually have someone put real money on the table. I appreciate it. We will still wait until after next Wednesday's Commissioners' meeting to see where things sit. I hope you will be patient with us. Until then, best regards, Larry. And B, hi Peggy, I hope you are well. Thank you for making an offer on the 56 East Mercury property. I have been taking the backseat on any deliberations. As Larry stated, we will wait until the Commissioners' meet on Wednesday. Kindly, Nancy Russo. Thus, you can see that my offer was financially reasonable. It is likely that your decision today will make a difference if it will be accepted or countered. Number two, her second major point, the structural report that has been prepared for the prospective buyer and previously not shared with the Council to: A, identify the primary structural systems of the system; B, discuss the general condition of the structure; and C, discuss a general discussion as to the suitability of the structure as it relates to the proposed renovation/use. As you might guess, the report was written with the prospective buyer's intended uses in mind, demolition of the cribs possibly for parking, and not with the use to renovate an important historic building to a viable use in Uptown, hostel in a bordello. Renovation would provide jobs for local construction workers for the renovation, reduce the amount of debris going to the landfill, attract additional visitors to Butte, and keep them in Butte longer. Three, if this uptown building is allowed to be demolished, a dangerous precedent for the future has been set. Delay presentation of the proposal to the Historical Preservation Commission until the end of the planning process so they cannot work with an owner/seller to formulate an alternative plan to mitigate the property for the planned use instead of demolition and/or and search for prospective buyers that might opt for preservation; B, generate a buy-sell or a contract for D that no one can see so that the seller can invoke a prior commitment to sell, and the HPC cannot ask that the property be advertised to other prospective buyers who might renovate the building to a safe and useful structure and maintain Butte's claim to its mining history; or C, with the slanted structural report encourages Butte Silver Bow to put a warning of dangerous building, which implies that demolition is the only solution. It was a bit late in its notification. This notice still allows for an abatement plan to mitigate structural problems so that a building will not be dangerous and the building can be saved. I hope that you will consider all of the points that I have made for the financial, historic, and procedural benefits that Butte Silver Bow may gain by allowing mitigation of structural problems and development of at least some of the buildings at 56 East Mercury. Should you have any question of my financial viability to accomplish such a goal, you are free to contact the president of your local Granite Mountain Bank for my ability to do so. Should you question my intention to do so, you may also look at the buildings that I have restored into viable and higher tax-paying entities in Butte: the Hodgins', the Ryan Mansion, the William A. Clark Jr. Stable, Kirchhouse, and Home, the Church of Christ Science Church, the Fourplex Apartments on East Park, and private homes at 620, 627, and 630 West Silver. I have provided before and after pictures of each structure in my February 17th letter to the Council of Commissioners. Thank you for your consideration of both me and the future of Butte as an attractive tourist destination in a vibrant city looking to the future with a mind to the past. Don't let Uptown Butte become just another city with new cookie-cutter buildings that every other city has. Sincerely, Margaret Guccione. The next letter is from Mark Farrar of Butte. Dear Council of Commissioners, my name is Mark Farrar, son of Lawrence and Cynthia Farrar, owners of the Hennessy Building at 130 North Main Street, Butte, Montana. I'm the owner of Knot Square Design LLC in that same building and have been practicing architectural and structural design since 1996, where I mostly did business in the state of Arizona with offices in Flagstaff, Prescott, and Scottsdale. Prior to that, I worked for two structural engineers in Phoenix that had offices next to each other, working for both of them at once. I was contacted by Peggy Guccione on February 5th of this year to look at helping her plan Level One modifications to the Clark Stables House at 842 West Calina, also here in Butte. As our relationship developed, she asked me to look into and offer my opinion on the structural integrity of the Blue Range Cribs listed above. I have conducted life safety studies on historic buildings in Arizona during my career and am conducting a feasibility study on the Curtis Music Hall here in town. I also conducted several special inspections for a professional engineer that I attended ASU with, starting in 1990. Were the only students willing to take on the Architecture B program during the five years I was there. This is a program that combined architecture with structural engineering. Although we have not been allowed entrance to the cribs, for the most part, I find I am in agreement with that of the engineer Kevin Feldman in his report, which I have been informed has lately been reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. Without being granted entrance, I cannot speak to whether or not I agree with the entire report. Although the Boeing in the cribs of what appears to be about six inches below the first and second floors appears accurate, the grainy nature of the included photographs did not allow me to see much of what was explained for the interior. Peggy has shown significant experience with restoring old buildings, both cosmetically and structurally. When we first met, she was clear that this was more of a hobby than any kind of business and was not in it to make money. She has traveled to Butte on many occasions during her career as a geologist, fell in love with the old buildings as many as are. I am perplexed by the decision to demolish a building with such history if there is a woman that is willing to not only purchase it but go to any expense to restore it to its former glory. The engineer's report stated that one reason he felt that the building could not be saved is because it was generally not cost-effective. Being that Peggy is not looking to make a profit, I do not know how this applies in her case. In a conversation, I addressed the danger to public safety with her, and she agreed that this would be taken care of right away, and then a plan would be developed to resort the remainder of the project. This would most definitely include addressing the hazard of falling debris from the parapet wall. I very much enjoyed learning that the name came from Ellen Ballmer's "devil's perch prostitution from sweet to cellar" in Butte, Montana, end quote, and the building directly across the street would make for a wonderful part of our historic tours once the cribs were restored. I urge the Commission to speak further with Peggy and reconsider their approval of destruction of this building considering the above comments made by Peggy. Sincerely, Mark Farrar. There are three other small comments here, so we're almost getting to the end here. This one is from Eldon Beal. He is at 315 South Dakota Street, Butte. Chief Executive JP Gallagher, Council of Commissioners, my public comment for tonight's Council of Commissioners' meeting is also a complaint about how my Communications 19-443 dated September 6, 2019, and Communication 2020-387 have been handled or not handled. My last communication was eventually referred again to judiciary and nothing until I put in another communication. The regular meeting from October The regular meeting from October seventh, twenty twenty, where Parks and Recreation voided their opinion and or recommendation is just that. They are a board or they are a board or committee of Butte Silver Bow employees and not elected officials. If I have submitted multiple commissions communications addressing a problem, then that means it hasn't been resolved. My communications are regarding Butte Silver Bow Munich Code ordinances involving park restrictions, chapter nine point sixteen and chapter nine point two oh dash use of alcoholic beverages on city county owned property and the newest controversial chapter eight point two six dash public drinking ordinance. Comments were made by Commissioners at the October seventh, twenty twenty regular meeting that these ordinances are old and outdated. If that's true, why was chapter nine point sixteen updated or revised in two thousand and seven? If that's the case, chapter nine point two oh, use of alcoholic beverages on city county owned property, which is and has been in effect and listed as current in Butte Silver Bow Munich Code and any opinion or recommendation made by Parks and Recreation would be void. Because they are listed in the ordinance as the approved approval authority and the consumption of alcoholic beverages on city county property on a daily basis and abused is not in conformance with quote applicable laws, regulations, and ordinances, end quote. Also, there has to be on premises liability insurance coverage in effect. Does this proof of insurance have to be posted on site? I still think that the impropriety and egregious action not to enforce ordinances by the Council of Commissioners, Parks and Recreation, and the County Attorney's Office does does affect the health, safety, peace, and welfare of the neighborhood, Butte High School, and jeopardizes our informed decisions for the health and safety of its citizens. Thank you, Eldon Beal. The next letter uh comment is from Nancy Woodruff at six twenty five North Main. Dear Council of Commissioners, I am writing to urge you to stand by your previous vote regarding a forty five day stay for the Blue Range Building and to suspend the safety exclusion. Butte Silver Bow has a process for dealing with demolition requests of historic buildings. Please let that process proceed. The safety exclusion should not be used as an end run around the historic preservation process. The Blue Range Building has stood for more than a hundred and twenty years, and it strains the mind to think that it could stand for another that it could not stand for another forty five days. That would be a high degree of imminent danger indeed. If the building is so extremely dangerous, why are people still permitting to enter it? Why has the county not blocked off the sidewalk to protect the public? I believe the lack of these actions demonstrates that no one believes the level of danger to be so extreme. This case has become complicated with various branches of county government issuing opinions that do not necessarily align with each other. I do believe that each county representative is acting in good faith to do their job as they best see fit. When confusing or conflicting situations occur, it is the role of the council to determine how to proceed. You have the authority to act in the best interests of the community. Sometimes county government must make a difficult decision to demolish a building when structural failure is possible and there are no resources available to pay for rehabilitating the building. But that is not the case in this situation. Here we have a building with acknowledged historic value. We have an experienced qualified buyer willing to invest in restoring the cribs portion of the building and open a new business. Stax Motorsports would still be able to use the rest of the property for their purposes. There is a viable win-win solution on the table. If in light of this, the historic Blue Range Building is demolished, it can only be seen as an absolute failure of the county's historic preservation system. Thank you for considering my comments. Nancy Woodruff. And the last comment here is from Mitzi Brazilian, eight fifteen West Granite Street. This is regarding communication twenty twenty one dash one one eight. Dear Commissioners, it is the opinion of the County Attorney's Office, quote, that the HPC did not have the authority to intervene in an already existing contract for sale, end quote. The reasoning being that a buy sell agreement or whatever it might be, as a redacted version of the document, has not been made available to council supersedes the authority of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. However, when the buyer and seller signed that agreement, they knew or should have known that there was an Historic Preservation Ordinance in place and had been in its present form since two thousand and fifteen. Excuse me. Further, they should have known what said ordinance stipulated regarding the consideration of demolition alternatives and would have if they had asked the Historic Preservation Officer. As always, ignorance of the law is not a valid defense. We can only wonder what other local ordinances are vulnerable to the County Attorney's Office opinion if a party is not required to meet their terms because he or she did not know of them when signing a contract. The building code official has stated that, quote, delay of the Stax abatement plan will constitute a public safety hazard, unquote. The urgency of that hazard is not apparent, though. Let's review the timeline. The parties in the buy sell agreement began negotiations at least as early as August twenty twenty. A structural engineer made a field inspection on September eighth, twenty twenty. I know if I had if I had hired a structural engineer, I would not have waited three months for his report before asking what his preliminary thoughts were. But regardless, at the time the report was delivered to the buyer, three months had passed during which the crib stood with some deficiencies that required significant repair. Two months later, Butte Silver Bow tagged the cribs with a notice that identified it as a dangerous building, although entry by the buyer, seller, or their invited guests were was and is not precluded. Five weeks later, the seller's appeal of the vote of the Historic Preservation Commission came before council. Nine days after that, the building code officer invoked the public safety exclusion. The buyer and seller knew or should have known the serious condition of the Blue Range Buildings for at least seven months prior to today, and yet just now, the crib's condition is considered an emergency and associated liability has arguably risen to a high level. Beyond the supposed urgency of demolition, which the buyers and sellers plan for which the buyers and sellers plan for abatement, there is another abatement solution on the table. A generous cash backup offer opens the strong possibility of abatement by repair and is allowed by the dangerous building ordinance. I personally know the work of offerer investor, which has involved repair of some serious structural challenges, with the results now contributing to the tax rolls. Further, the offerer had earlier approached the buyer and seller with a preferred plan to subdivide the lot such that only the cribs would be sold to her and the buyer to have the remaining point five acre of land and improvements on the lot. It was rejected. This compromised solution may have been better received seven months ago when negotiations first started, and if the buyer and seller acknowledged then then that alternatives to removal of a priceless historic building were possible. A series of events dating at least as far back as August twenty twenty and aimed at demolition of the cribs could have been turned long ago. It is not too late to do so now. Mitzi Brazilian. That is the last of the comments, and do we have anything on our phones coming in? Chief Executive Gallagher, there are no more comments at this time. Are you on mute? Touche.
Yes, touche. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Shaw. I'm sure your mouth is a little dry after all of reading all those, and thank you for that. And then I also wanted to add a little levity to this. I apologize to everyone for this shirt that I'm making myself dizzy as it as it shows up on the on the camera tonight. All right, so we will move forward as we go along now. We'll move on to section one consent consent agenda. Section eight, committee reports one through four, section B, communications one through twenty one. Commissioner Shaw.
Uh, are you gonna ask for any?
Oh, any, do we have any segregations? I'm sorry. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I'd like to segregate communication twenty twenty one dash one zero four.
Do you know what number that one is?
Communication, sorry.
Which one is it?
Communication eight.
Eight, got it.
Yeah, number twenty dash or twenty twenty one dash one zero four.
Gotcha. Okay, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'd like to segregate item one. It's communication twenty twenty one dash nine seven. And item twenty one, which is um communication twenty twenty one dash one nine.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Any other segregations? Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Um, so the question, communication in section two, so communication in section two, number two. Communication number twenty twenty one dash one one eight.
Uh, that is actually to be read and acted upon.
That's to be read and acted upon, so you don't need to segregate that.
Thank you.
We'll wait to go to that. Any other segregations? All right, seeing none. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve section one consent agenda, A one through four and B one through twenty one with the exceptions of item one, twenty twenty one dash ninety seven, item eight, twenty twenty one dash one oh four, and item twenty one, twenty twenty one dash one one nine.
Second. Okay, we have a a motion and a second to approve consent agenda, uh, section A, one through four, and B one through twenty one with the segregations of one uh, item number one, item number eight, and item number twenty one. Anything on the question? Uh, Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Commissioner, Commissioner Shaw, I must be looking at our old agenda. My communication said number twenty one or number twenty, twenty one dash one one nine.
No, it's it. We we added in twenty. Yeah.
Commissioner Shaw, that was the, yes, I mean.
Well, no. Excuse me, Chief Executive Gallagher, I'm sorry to to talk over you.
It's okay.
So Commissioner Sorge, we did add that in, but it was on the original uh, when we set the agenda Friday, that should have been on there. It's item twenty one. So I'm not sure what happened there, but
Okay.
It came in a little late, but we did add it in. It was on the agenda or it was on the posted agenda Friday.
And Cindy, what number was that again?
Item twenty one, and this is a communications B. Kristen Rosa.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I don't. Okay.
So you're still on the question, right?
Yeah, on the question. Any other? Okay. Okay, would Commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, would you please record the vote?
We have eleven yay and zero nay.
Eleven yay, zero nay, motion passes. We'll go to segregations. We'll go to number one, communication number twenty twenty one dash nine seven, Eldon Beal. Three fifteen South Dakota Street, Butte, Montana, requesting Council of Commissioners, the Judiciary Committee, and Bill Anderson to enact the task force or commitment to stop the public drunkenness and prohibit action ink from feeding the homeless in Emma Park. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I spoke with Commissioner Anderson. This is his district, and a lot of you know that there have been a lot of things that transpired over the last year in this area, the Emma Park area. I originally was in a note and placed it on file, but then I chatted with Eldon and and Bill, and since we do have some newer Commissioners, and just to kind of recap what was done already in the past. Bill, since he can't be here tonight, he would have done that this evening, but he is not here, so he asked me to send it to committee the whole, and he plans on discussing it in detail next week with the council. So that's my purpose of sending it to committee the whole. That would be my motion, and if there's anything that anybody cares that, comment before I do that, let me know.
Second.
Okay, so we we have a motion to send this to the committee of the whole, and we have a second. Anything on the question? Commissioner Fisher.
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. And all due respect to Eldon Beal, um, we've been visiting Eldon through quite a few years on this, but um, the communication actually asked for a committee to stop public drunkenness and prohibit feeding. We as the Council of Commissioners do not have the authority to do either of those. I have no problem holding this in committee of the whole, but um, it's more or less a waste of time because his request is something that we as Commissioners have no authority for. There are enforcement issues. Public drunkenness is a sheriff department issue, and feeding the homeless in Emma Park. I mean, that is uh, nothing that the Commissioners are really are gonna have anything to say. So, in all due respect to Commissioner Anderson, I'll allow this to go to the committee as a whole, but um, there really is nothing in this communication that we as Commissioners can do to make his request acceptable, so. I just thought I'd put that out there and uh, you know, I would make a substitute motion, but I think I'm just gonna let it ride and due respect to Mr. Anderson not being here, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and uh, you're preaching to the choir, Jim. I mean, I understand what you're saying. But if you read his entire letter, there's a lot of pieces to it. It's just that, you know, we have to have a caption that puts a couple of things on there. And Chief Executive Gallagher, you know, when he was director of Parks and Recs, he certainly has had a lot of experience. Anybody that was on judiciary last year, so. Uh, in respect for Commissioner Anderson, this is his district, I think that we'll let him go with it. That would be my my reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Um, like, uh, to move this forward, I would think it'd be appropriate during that time for that discussion to have the chief here, chief, have, I mean, the sheriff here too. This is definitely something, I don't know if Eldon Beal is calling the police on these things, but um, uh, again, we need the police involved in this. He needs to be a part of this conversation or else, again, it is a really big waste of time if he's not in this conversation, so. I'm just throwing my two cents in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Anyone else on the question? Okay, we have a motion to send this to the committee of the whole, and we have a second. Could Commissioners please vote? What do you want to change their vote? And clerk, would you please record the vote?
It looks like we have nine yay and two nay.
Nine yay, two nay, uh, motion passes. Moving on to commu- communication number eight, uh, number eight, communication number twenty twenty one dash one zero four. Mark Fisher, golf pro manager Highland View Golf Course, because in Council of Commissioners authorization to add three hundred dollars of petty cash for Highland View Golf Course in order to accommodate the second register located at the bar simulator commons area. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Um, I segregated this just to uh, one, I think I understand why that he's asking for three hundred, but then also seeing Mr. Fisher here, so uh, just wanted to ask him, you know, what the plan is with that, and then go into a little bit more depth in how how the golf course is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner O'Neill. Uh, Mr. Fisher, um, you're on, so stay clear.
Commissioner O'Neill and Chief Gallagher, thank you guys for taking my time. So I just wanted to give a little update. We are expanded, so I did have two tills. Um, in the old golf shop, I only have one. Now I have two with the uh, with the golf shop and now with the concession slash bar area along with the simulator area, so I'm asking for the three hundred dollars. Um, I just wanted to give a quick update on regards to, we did open on February twentieth. We've only been open eleven days. Um, our revenue right now, we're averaging three hundred and three hundred and eighty seven dollars per day with zero advertisement. We kind of been going on a soft advertisement. Um, I expect that to get the actually even more. So as of right now, we we brought in three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in eleven days in simulator use. And we brought in one thousand three hundred and eighty eight dollars and fifty cents in on concession, so. My my quest is with the banks not opening on Saturdays, I need the extra three hundred dollars because I don't have the back tills with banks not being open on Saturday, so I need the three the extra three hundred dollars to have change because we are actually busy.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Anything else on the question? All right, seeing no question, would you like to make a motion? All right, seeing no question. Would you like to make a motion, Commissioner O'Neil? I believe you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive Gallagher. I guess at this time, I'd like to make a motion to put communication eight, twenty-two-one dash one oh four and place on file.
Okay, we have a motion to place on file, concur and place on file.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, please record the vote.
Can I give note? Can you see who that might be? We're just checking. We're missing, missing a vote here. Justin, did you vote? And if, if you did, give us a high sign. I can't see him now.
I can't see him either.
Okay, here we go. Where's Justin?
I think he must have went offline.
Oh.
Got kicked off.
There he is.
There's a film.
All right, we have eleven yay, zero nay. Thank you, Justin.
Eleven yay, zero nay, motion passes.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher.
Yep.
Moving on to communication number twenty-one. Now, I'm a little confused on this. Is this our suspension of the rules?
No, this, this is part of the agenda. It's actually.
I don't have it on mine either.
I don't know how to explain it.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I have it as I printed out of the internet today. Communication number twenty, twenty-two-one, one nineteen, Kristen Rosa, Tiffett Administrator requesting counsel.
That's right.
That is the one I have, and it's number twenty, and that's twenty-two-one dash one one nine.
Oh, it's number twenty, not twenty-one.
It's twenty.
Twenty.
Okay, okay, so we will go to communication, and so segregation, we'll change the segregation to communication number twenty, communication number twenty-two-one dash one one nine. Kristen Rose said, Tiffett Administrative, Administrator requesting council of commissioners concurrence and authorization for the chief executive to sign an amendment to purchase and sale agreement with warehouse distribution of you that was executed on September second, two thousand and twenty. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. It's a mystery. Mine says twenty-one. Okay, so the reason I segregated this, if you'll notice, there's no recommendation underneath of that. It came in kind of late, and we, we did put it in there, but my recommendation, of course, is to concur and place on file, just for the record, and that would be my motion, is to add in the recommendation to concur with communication twenty-two-one dash one one nine and place this on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to concur and place communication number twenty-two-one dash one one nine, concur and place on file. I'm going to second. Anything on the question? Will commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, would you please record the vote? Did we get goofed up? I think we did because it, it went from A, B, C, D. B was.
Still have to correct that, Cap.
I believe you still passed with it being a yes, but.
Yeah.
Correct this?
We're, we're working on correcting it right now.
Okay.
I think that would be the best way to go.
Yes.
You know, it assuming does, huh?
Yep.
Okay. We need to do it again, Cap? Yes.
Revote. Could I have commissioners please revote?
Please, please revote. Thank you.
And would anyone like to change their vote now? Clerk, please record your vote.
Eleven yay, zero nay.
Eleven yay, zero nay. Okay, so moving on to section two, communications to be read and acted upon.
Excuse me, Chief Executive Gallagher, we need to add in the.
This number.
The suspension.
That's where, that's where I was goofed up on number twenty-one. This one in that.
That's all right. It all worked out.
Okay, so we'll move on to communication number twenty-two-one dash one one seven is communication for the clerk and recorder, Linda Sager Joyce, regarding twenty-two-one special purpose district elections for volunteer fire department trustees. The communication advised that the governing body that the twenty-two-one elections for those volunteers, fire department trustees, were canceled as there were no contested races, and therefore all the trustees were elected by acclamation. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to concur with communication twenty-two-one dash one one seven and places on file.
Second.
We have a motion to concur and place on file and second it. Anything on the question? Would commissioners please vote? Commissioner Shay.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I think we need to maybe edit the, the question on the vote. This is voting on suspension of the rules rather than to concur.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Shay. Good catch.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Shay. So we're voting on.
Concur and place on.
Concur, place on file on the suspension of the rules.
It's being put through again so that we can get the caption on there. Just concur and place on file, one one seven.
I see. It'll be nice when we can get back in person. She's doing fantastic.
Okay.
Okay, would everyone please vote? To concur to place on file. Would anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, will you please record the vote?
We're short of votes, so we're checking.
Excuse me, Chief Executive Gallagher, did we not have to vote on suspension of the rules prior to concurrent filing?
We did that at the beginning. Commissioner Fisher, thank you.
So we're missing a vote. Let's see. Sean?
I clicked on it, but yes, I'm a yes.
Thank you. We have eleven yay, zero nay.
Eleven yay, zero nay, motion passes. Now we'll move to section two, communications to be read and acted upon. We have communication number twenty-two-one dash one one five, Jennifer Mitchell, Mitchell, twenty-five zero nine, State Street, Viewmont Tanner, requesting council commissioners concurrence to appeal the February eighth, twenty-two-one decision by HPO and HPC on the determination of eligibility and demolition COA for twenty-five zero five State Street, Viewmont Tanner. Is Mr. Mitchell on the line?
So she's not, I have to call her, so.
Commissioner Shaw.
And Commissioner O'Neil, were, were you going to call her or was she calling in? I have a note here that you had her phone number.
No.
I think Commissioner O'Neil was on the second communication.
Thank you. We're calling them. Got it.
Okay. We'll hold on tight, allow Mr. Mitchell.
We're calling her. No pressure, Josh.
Right.
We're getting there. We're sorry, your call did not go through.
Okay, let's try one more.
It's a long distance.
Okay. I'll call her, tell her to call him. Or here.
We're getting there, just trying to get through.
So try one more.
Commissioner Sorge, do you have a question?
Sorry, we're.
You know, I just have a comment just to keep things rolling. I know, Commissioner, this is Commissioner Shay's district. I suspect she's probably talked to a lot of the neighbors. Michelle, do you have a thing that you wanted to add while we're waiting for? Mrs. Mitchell?
Thank you, Commissioner Sorge. Commissioner Shay, do you have a comment?
Right.
Hello?
Oh, I think she's here.
Have I got, have I got anybody on? I can't tell if I'm on or not.
You are, yes.
Good, okay.
Can you hear us?
I'm sorry, you're breaking up on me. I, I can't hear everybody or anything.
We can hear you, Mrs. Mitchell.
So did you want?
Go ahead. You can, you can give your comments.
Considering my appeal, first off, and I would like to note that I don't think you read into the record Amanda and Sean Cullen's letter. They used to live at twenty-five oh three State Street, and I know they sent you one because they sent me a copy, and it talks about the issues and problems that being so close to twenty-five oh five State Street, and they actually, that was a family home from, oh gosh, probably from the nineteen thirties, and it was a big decision to move, but they finally had to move because it was just untenable.
Mrs. Mitchell, I, I apologize that I don't think we, we have that to read into the record, so we can't officially have that or even have you reference that, but we would like to hear from you about your.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't understand what you're saying. Your very face is kind of echoing.
Jennifer, can you hear me?
We have a really lousy connection at home. I really, I can't hear what you're saying.
We've got the microphones up as close as we can.
Can you hear me okay? So Jennifer, we did not receive the letter, so we can't officially read it into the record, is what Chief Executive Gallagher was saying.
You, you can't, you hadn't seen the letter, so you can't read it into the record? Is that what you said?
Correct, yes.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry, because I know they sent it, so I don't know what happened, but I just thought I'd mention that.
Okay. Is there anything else that you would like to add regarding this issue?
I'm sorry.
Jennifer, do you have your phone on speaker?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, I was just curious. Jennifer, is there anything else that you would like to add?
Well, I mean, if you didn't receive it, you didn't receive it, because I just wanted to mention that we had just one.
Okay. Commissioner Shay.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Jennifer, I hope you can hear me. I, I think we just need to move past the issue of the public comment that was not received, and if we could just have you speak a little bit about your request for your appeal, and just explain it to the full council for us, please.
Well, I, I sent a letter. I don't know if everybody got chance to read it, but it was pretty straightforward, and I, I had to lay it out in simple, non-emotional way.
Jennifer?
Oh, that's better. Yes.
Commissioner Shay was asking you to speak on your appeal.
It, it, okay, well, we bought this house, and it's in a really bad shape, and we would like to demolish it, and sell part of the lot to our neighbor, and both of us can have wider yards. Everybody else in the neighborhood's got a sixty-foot lot, and our house is only a forty-five foot lot. This twenty-five oh five State Street is shoe-harred in. It's thirty-four foot wide footprint plus five foot overhang, roof overhang to the both sides, so it almost filled the entire lot in its bulk. All the windows are on east and the west side for the most part, and it takes away the privacy, our privacy and the neighbors at twenty-five oh three's privacy. And the house is in terrible condition. It's not even a cute craftsman bungalow. It doesn't have any of the features at all. None of the molding, no collies, no staircase, no built-in, no fireplace, nothing. And it, it's just a really cheap catalog house that's not been taken care of for twenty years. And I don't want to be a landlady, and I don't want anybody to live there because the, the, it takes away all my privacy. I didn't realize even how much privacy I lost until I finally went into the house and looked out the windows, and I was like, yeah. It was stunning, and I went, there's no way if I buy this house, I'm ever letting anybody live there, ever. So, I mean, if I can't tear it down, it'll just stand there naked. And I don't understand deeply why I would be denied the duty to demolish property that I bought outright and that I own, and it has no usefulness in my world, and there's nobody, I've tried to get people to move it. I, I've offered it to all types of people, and my mover won't even take it because he says it takes too much work. Moving has gotten to be very, very expensive, and I have, I have moved the building, and I restored it, and I kept it rental for twenty-five years, so I know what all that entails. And I did the analysis on restoring and remodeling, on relocating, and on. restoring and remodeling, on relocating, and on demolition. And there's, it, it, all the benefits and the cost effectiveness in demolition. Anyway, so that, I would like, um, but for some reason or others, it, it decided she's going to save that house regardless. However, she's got to do it. And part of that was she wants to declare the whole more, uh, Floral Park area as a his neighborhood historic district. And, uh, when she said, well, she couldn't, it'd take eighty percent of the neighbors, and she was going to presume the local register as local historic. And, I, I mean, it's, I, 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 I'm stunned, I guess. I've never been treated like this by historic preservation people. I, I don't know what happened to the municipality and property rights. And it's, uh, kind of a small situation, and, um, it's, it's actually created a lot of stress, um, in my family, and, um, I'd like to get this taken care of as soon as possible, and I'm not, I'm trying to, trying to follow the rules, but the, your historic preservation ordinances are, um, and are impossible to follow. And Ms. McCormick kept changing the process on us. We started this at the end of November, and she said, well, you can, she wouldn't do, uh, the determination of eligibility unless we have demolition permit and something else to go with it. No, we did a partial demolition permit, because we didn't have a contractor yet. And then, she said, uh, she, a month later, she said, well, it's historic, but I can't do both at the same time. You've got to do one together. And I mean, it was just, it, it just, week to week, you change the process on us. So, it really created a terrific hardship on us, and I would hate to see anybody else have to go through this. Uh, but right now, I, it's important that I resolve this structure and get it down before it breaks and you decide to live there. Um, uh, and because of where I'm from in the neighborhood, we worked very hard on our house to restore. I, I took a lot of, um, blood, blood and tears to get our, our nineteen oh, nineteen fourteen, nineteen seventeen house right next door. And I'd like to continue making our property something to be proud of in Floral Park area.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Um, so we're going to, Commissioners, Commissioner Fisher.
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Jennifer, I don't know if you're still on the line or not, but I would like to speak on your behalf. As you know, you and I have exchanged emails for probably the last, um, two months over this issue, and, uh, I also involved Commissioner Shea, who was in your district as a representative. And I think that, uh, prior to going to the Historical Preservation Committee, we did visit about quite a bit of this, and, uh, the neighbors in the, uh, area are all in favor of demolition. Jennifer's husband, Bill William Mitchell, um, has suffered some, uh, heartache over this, some health issues. It's become quite a deal. Um, I don't want to get into the personal aspects of historical preservation or the Historical Preservation Officer. Uh, I just think that it's time that we, as a commission, take this and, uh, make a vote and see what we're going to do. So I'm going to, uh, just let this go, and then I will make a motion as things go, but I see this as an issue that it is in the Floral Park area. I think the house should be allowed for demolition. I will make that proposal, but I think I would like to offer, uh, Commissioner Shea the opportunity to have her input of what she has also visited with the Mitchells about, so, um, thank you, Chief Executive, and, uh, Commissioner Shea, if you would add your, uh, bit to, that would be wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Um, yes, this is, um, number one, um, Commissioner Fisher has a personal relationship with the Mitchells, and so they reached out to him, and he in turn reached out to me, and the two of us have been pretty closely involved in, um, the communications with them. I don't want to vilify our Historic Preservation Commission, because I think they are fantastic. I think they are motivated. I think they are very professional. Um, I, I do think that the communication between the Historic Preservation Commission, the Historic Preservation Officer, and the Mitchells broke down somewhere along the line, and I will call that a no-fault breakdown, uh, because I'm not sure I wasn't there. But I did sit in on the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, where, um, this demolition was discussed, and, um, the, the idea that the demolition, demolition should be, um, denied or, or slowed down based on the eventual, that the house could be a contributing, um, factor, or a contributing to an, to an eventual historic district, that was, that was the argument that was made, and, and to me, I don't feel like that is a good faith argument in that moment. Um, to hold them to a standard, um, to prevent them from doing something with their own private property, and to hold them to a standard that does not yet exist, I believe is unfair. And I think it contradicts the property rights that they're entitled to under law, although I do want to qualify that with, I do think that our Historic Preservation Commission has the best of intentions. But I do also think that the Mitchells have the best of intentions in their neighborhood. They want to be good neighbors. They want to have a, a beautiful neighborhood, just as much as anyone else does. Um, so my biggest issue was the fact that there is no historic district, um, designated down there. Ms. McCormick has told me that to, to create a historic district boundary down in the Floral Park area, they would have to designate the boundaries, and it would take an eighty percent vote of the people that live in that area. And I can tell you that from the feedback that I have received, I think I already heard from eighty percent of the people once this hit the newspaper, that they don't, maybe that's a little exaggeration. It probably wasn't eighty, but the overwhelming, um, feeling of the people in the district was they don't want that. They don't want to go start tearing down their homes either, but they really don't want to have this dark district designated. Um, so with that, I would, I would make a motion that, um, we approve the appeal requested in Communication twenty twenty-one dash one one five, um, and I'll, and I'll leave it there.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the appeal. I, I saw that Commissioner Sorge had a question.
I would second the motion, I, second the motion, but I also just want to make a comment also. I have received a few calls also, even though it's not my area. You know, first off, I want to say thank you to the Historic Preservation folks. They've been a lot of long-term members, long-time members, and they do work hard, and they do have a passion for what they do, and, uh, you know, it's, and it's a good thing. You know, Lord only knows how much, uh, historical artifacts have walked out of New Montana over the years. You know, so it's a good thing that we have those folks there. But again, I think it has to be within reason. I think it has to be, you know, for the best, for the best good of our community. Um, I'm just not, I also have a strong belief that property, uh, proper property rights should be a higher priority, you know, again, within reason. Um, I guess I'm not, I support the demolition of the, uh, uh, house on State Street. You know, these folks have tried to do everything they can, you know, to try to, you know, to try to move the house to get rid of it. You know, the neighbors have spoken loud and clear, um, you know, so I think we could, we all need to support what these folks want to do.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Sorge. Commissioner, um, Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I, I see Eileen is on, and I, I just want to clarify what exactly the, what, what, there's only a certain action that we can approve on this appeal, or I would tell Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw, and, uh, County Attorney Joyce.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Commissioner Shaw. Um, I did have some contact with Ms. Mitchell, and she asked the question about whether or not she could appeal the action of the HPC. And, um, as you know, the HPC has not voted to deny the demolition permit. Their action was to initiate, um, a forty-five day delay, and that's the action that's being appealed. So, I don't think the council at this time has the authority to, um, vote to approve a demolition permit without sending it back to the HPC. The council could ask the HPC to have a special meeting to, uh, and to say that they don't want the HPC to, uh, require Ms. Mitchell to pursue any demolition alternatives and to make a decision on her demolition request. And then the HPC could vote, um, one way or another, and unfortunately, if they voted to deny the demolition permit, it would have to be, again, appealed to the council commissioners, if that's what Ms. Mitchell, um, chose to do. But the action that is being appealed is only the action of the HPC, which was to invoke a forty-five day demolition.
Delay.
Delay.
Okay. Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. Uh, Commissioner O'Neill, you have your, you're up next.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. So I'm confused wha, how the HPC blocks this if the fact it's not in a historic district. That's where I'm confused. How, how do they get involved if she's going to defer that demolition permit if she's not in a historic district? Did you, somebody said that, I missed it, so I apologize.
Commissioner O'Neill, are you directing that question to, uh, County Attorney Joyce, or?
You know, open-ended, whoever wants to raise their hand and answer would be great. Thank you, sorry to leave it open.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll defer that to County Attorney Joyce, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner O'Neill. The reason that, uh, this was explained to Ms. Mitchell also. Um, basically, the definition of a historic property, um, indicates that an historic property includes a historic district that's eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And, um, Ms. McCormick, uh, began that determination by doing a reconnaissance survey of the area. And she indicated that based on her survey, and she had this verified by the State Historic Preservation Office, that this is an area that is eligible to be a historic district, and therefore it meets the definition of an historic property, because it's within an area that's eligible, eligible to be an historic district. Um, it's just like if there was a historic property, um, located somewhere, but the, uh, property owner hadn't had it designated as an historic doc, property yet, but then they wanted to demolish it. They would still say that it's eligible to be an historic property, so therefore you have to go through the Historic Preservation Commission. Because this is in an area that's eligible to be a historic district, that's why the HPC had jurisdiction over the matter. But Ms. McCormick has also indicated that there are very, there's, it's quite a process, and there would require eighty percent of the neighborhood to agree to have it be a historic district, but our definition of an historic property includes, um, properties located within the area that are eligible to be an historic district, so that's why they had jurisdiction over this property.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. Um, I'll go to, I'm not quite sure. I'll, I'll come back to you, Commissioner O'Neill. We want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity. Um, Commissioner Sorge.
Uh, thank you. You know, after hearing the county attorney talk, I guess I'd make a substitute motion to, um, uh, to make a request for the, uh, HPC to meet, to reevaluate the Mitchell's demolition permit within the next thirty days.
Okay, um, so your substitute motion, I, I think that the only motion that we can take is to, is the appeal on the forty-five days, and then we can request, but I think it can only be on the appeal of the forty-five day stay to review this. Am I correct? Uh, County Attorney Joyce?
Uh, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, um, I'm not sure there's been a motion made, has there?
Well, he just, he just went on a subs, uh, the original motion was to, to try to, motion to approve the appeal, but the, the, uh, communication that was, that went with that was the, to appeal the demolition, so that was not an appropriate action taken, so he, so Commissioner Sorge was doing a substitute motion to appeal, um, for them to meet to, to do the demolition. But I think that the motion that we have to take right now is just an appeal on the forty-five days, if I'm correct.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, um, I mean, you certainly can ask the HPC to meet as soon as possible to reconsider their decision. You might note that they met on February eighth to make this original decision, and so I believe that Commissioner Sorge's communication would even be past that forty-five days if you had thirty days added to today's date for them to meet. Um, so I don't think that that, uh, helps the Mitchells' appeal, because, uh, forty-five days from February eighth is probably shorter than thirty days from today.
Right. Okay, thank you, County Attorney Joyce. Uh, Commissioner Callahan.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Uh, I just would like to add to County Attorney Joyce's that their, their decision was to give them a forty-five day stay. And their thirty days or more of that has already been passed, so within the next twelve to thirteen days, their forty-five days is up. And, uh, from what I understand, if there's no action taken, she's allowed to go ahead and do whatever she would like with the property. They would have to schedule a pro, uh, a special meeting to turn around and discuss whether they want to give her the auction or not. And from what I've explained, if they don't take any action and let it go, then she's allowed to, what she would please. Somebody can correct me if that's wrong, but that's the way.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Callahan. Uh, County Attorney Joyce, can you respond to that? I don't know if that's.
Um, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Callahan, I, I believe that there were some conditions that the HPC, um, indicated that the Mitchells should still during that forty-five day, um, demolition delay period. If Ms. Mitchell's still on, she could probably, um, verify what she was asked to do, but the purpose of the delay was for her to, um, consider demolition alternatives. So, um, the HPC will have to meet again, um, after that forty-five day period and decide, uh, whether she's, they believe she's adequately fulfilled the demolition alternatives, or her explain why she wasn't able to do that, and then make an ultimate decision on her request for demolition.
Thank you, uh, County Attorney Joyce. Any other discussion? Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Um, I have my notes right here from, um, participating and listening into that Historic Preservation Commission meeting, um, back in February. Bobby Stauffer made the motion to require the Mitchells to advertise, um, moving the house out before demolition for forty-five days. So that was the action that they took. Um, so my, my original motion, um, was to approve her appeal, which would, uh, would basically undo that action by the Historic Preservation Commission. Correct me if I'm wrong, County Attorney Joyce, um, which would shorten their, um, their forty-five days considerably since thirty have already passed. Um, and then I would assume, I don't know that we can request as part of the motion for this sort of Preservation Commission to call a special meeting, or if they would just naturally do that once, um, the council takes action on one of their actions. Um, so that was, I, I hope that kind of clears it up.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Shea. County Attorney Joyce.
Oh, thank you, Chief Executive and Commissioner Shea. Uh, the only thing is that her letter indicates, I respectfully request that you grant our appeal and authorize a demolition permit. So that is why, when you said you wanted to, um, approve her appeal, I jumped in to say that I don't think that you can take the action that she's requesting in her letter.
Okay, all right. Thank you, uh, County Attorney Joyce. Uh, I'll come back to you, Michelle. I'll come back to you, Michelle, because Commissioner Shaw's had her hand up. We'll go to her and then I'll come back.
It's just a point of order because we do have a substitute motion on the floor with, which was not seconded. And I don't know at this point if Commissioner Storage wants to, you know, take away his motion or whatever you want to call that.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Point of order. Okay, Commissioner Storage, would you like to withdraw your substitute motion?
Yes, I'll withdraw my substitute motion so we can figure out a timeline so we can get it, you know, so we can get the right timing down at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Storage. Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I would like to amend my motion to you might have to help me, County Attorney Joyce, with the wording on this so I can make sure that I get it right. I would like to make a motion that in regards to Communication 2021-115, we override the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to require a 45 day period of time for the Mitchells to advertise the property in question to be moved off of the property.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we have a, we have a substitute motion or amended motion to override the decision of the 45 delay, day delay to move the structure. County Attorney Joyce.
Mr. Chief Executive and Commissioner Shea, that motion is fine. I just wanted to make you aware that the HPC does only meet monthly and they just had a meeting last night. So you may want to add to your motion that you would request that the HPC meet within, you know, hold a special meeting in order to consider the Mitchells' demolition request within the next, whatever you think is appropriate, seven days or.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. I think Commissioner Reardon had his hand up and I'll come back to you.
Thanks, Mr. Chief Executive. In listening to the conversation going on, it seems to me like basically time is of the element for the Mitchells. And then listen to Mr. Callahan's commit, conversation and all the time. By the time we have meetings and do appeals and everything like that, I, I think Dan mentioned that with 12 more days, by the time we set this all up and meet again, we'd be close to the deal. Basically, it's their, it's their decision and what they want to do. I think that the simple method here would be the best method because right now it seems like we're more or less in pandemonium. I think everybody pretty much is on the same boat here, wanting to make this work for the people involved. And it seems like the deal is, is that we still have this timeframe with the HPC. I mean, that's just my opinion and I thought I'd interject that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reardon. County Attorney Joyce, can you comment on that? Because I don't know if that's correct or not, that if no action's taken within that 45 days, that it automatically goes to demolition or they, they're approved?
Oh, well, Mr. Chief Executive, again, probably a point of order that I think that Commissioner Shea made a motion. And I asked her if she wanted to add her motion and I think she wanted to, but I don't know that there's been a second. And I think we need to allow her to take her full motion and have a second before we again start discussions. So.
Okay. So I heard a second, but would we like to go and let Commissioner, Commissioner Shea amend her motion if she would like to do that. So Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. I am really sorry for the confusion, but I would like to add to my last amended emotion, amended motion to make a request for the Historic Preservation Commission to meet within the next seven days to discuss this action.
All right. So we have a motion, amended motion to add it to the original motion to override the decision of the 45 day delay to have this strength to move and add a request that the HPC meet in the next seven days.
Second.
And we have a second. Okay. Is there anything else on the question? Commissioner, I'm sorry, Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I'm going to try to stay cool and calm on this, but I'm just going to say we have got to do better in the future on both of these communications that we're talking on. And I won't say anything on the next one, but we have got to do better. It's frustrating that we don't know what's going on. It's really frustrating that our Historic Preservation Officer has not been in any of these meetings to answer any of the questions that happened last night in the meeting or the meeting before. And I'll just leave it at that. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fredrickson. Any, anything else? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I got a second with Commissioner Fredrickson saying. And you know, these things aren't that big a deal. When we got people that are historical board or whatever they are making these decisions with contingencies and then sending them to elected officials where we can't make contingencies is just absolutely crazy. We are in a legal bind here that no one else is going to get us out of, and we have got some issues here. So I'm going to follow with the motions now, but my motion would be on any of these, ask for immediate action to have this thing peeled and demoed immediately. Thank you.
So I, I'm sorry on that, Commissioner Fisher. So do we have a, another motion to?
No.
Okay.
Following with Commissioner Shea's motion. I'm just showing my frustration. Thank you.
I, I got, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Anything else on the question? Okay. So I'm going to try to read this back with correct verbiage. Okay. So what we're going to be voting on is to amend motion to override the decision of the 45 day delay to have this, the structure at 2505 State Street moved. And add a request that the HPC meet within, have a special meeting within the next seven days to to act on the demolition permit. Okay. All right. Everybody understand the motion? All right. Anything on the question before we vote? Commissioner Shaw.
We don't, we want to keep this in place, correct? As a placeholder, this communication, Eileen? Just to make sure we're not placing it on file or anything like that. What was your recommendation to be doing with this communication since we're acting on it?
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. County Attorney Joyce.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Shaw. I think either way, you could.
If it could be demolished, it was your appeal for the 45 days.
I think Mrs. Mitchell may be online.
At any rate, it's, there's going to have to be an action, another communication that comes back to the council by the Mitchells in the event that the HPC denies her appeal. But if they don't deny her appeal and approve it, there won't be any further action that the council probably has to take on this matter.
Okay. Okay. Any other, Commissioner Fortune?
Just, just to comment, or thanks, Chief Executive Gallagher. I think we need to really look at what we're doing with these historical buildings. I mean, it's just such a gray area with, I mean, you could say any building's historical that wants to get demoed. And it seems like we're just putting this lady through the wringer for no reason. I mean, it's and now she's worried that in 45 days they're gonna deny it. I mean, they shouldn't have any any authority to do anything with the building. It's not in the historical district and at the time she wants to tear it down. I mean, we should just let her do what she wants to do and be the end of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Fortune. Any other comments before we vote? All right. Commissioners ready to vote? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote?
Well, it's a little condensed.
Okay. And Clerk, would you please record the vote?
We have 11 yea and zero nay.
11 yea, zero nay. And so this will be, the motion was to get, take it back to the HPC, override the 45 day. And they need to call a special meeting. Okay.
And the motion passes.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Moving on to, to Communication of the Red Act, Pond Number Two, Communication Number 2021-118. Mike Nation, Building Codes Official, requesting council commissioners to be advised that on January 12th, 2021, the building at 56 East Mercury was posted as a dangerous building pursuant to Butte Silver Bowl Municipal Call. Prior to posting, the owner had already entered into a buy-sell agreement for this property. Deputy County Attorney Molly Maffey informed us that the HPC did not have the authority to intervene with an already existing contract for sale. I am providing the council with this written notice for the billing that the building qualifies for the public safety exclusion pursuant to BSBMC 2-64-150, and I'm now invoking the exclusion. Is Mr. Nation with us?
Yes, he is.
All right. Mr. Nation.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher and Council of Commissioners. The only comment I have on this is, you know, when Butte Silver Bowl governing officials are notified by a professional engineer who presents an extensive report addressing the structural instabilities of a, an existing building, thus resulting in the building being posted as dangerous by our own governing order. I believe we have a obligation to protect the public from harm regardless of the building's historic significance. I feel the public safety exclusion is appropriate in this matter and that portions of the building should be allowed to be demolished without any further delay.
Thank you, Mr. Nation. I would, I would like to add into this that this has been, and I, and I share the frustrations of the commissioners as, as we've gone forward here. I think that by no, no one's intent, as we put this forward and, and we, we had the building owner and prospective buyer come forward to Butte Silver Bowl to talk about the purchase of this building and, and there was advice given to, to go get a structural engineer to make sure that they were doing the right things. Once we got the report from the structural engineer that this is a potential dangerous building, we were forced to go to the dangerous building ordinance. And from there, the discussion was that not to, at that time, to go to the safety exclusion because we wanted to involve the Historic Preservation Commission with this so that they did have a say with this. And I think that that in itself caused problems that had no intent to, to do that, but it, it really, really muddied the waters. And I, I know that, that Community Development Director Karen Burns is on here and she was in that meeting along with the number of us that when we did this. And so as I have stated in the past, we need to clear up our processes of what we're going to do. There was, it, it really caused a cloudiness of this. The intent was for us to, to get it to the HPC for them to, to really kind of rule on the demolition permit. That's what the hope was. And then, you know, they'd make their ruling and then send it back to the council, which is kind of where we thought this would be so that they would be able to weigh into it. So I'm going to defer to, to Director Burns and let her, you know, kind of add in a little bit of, of the history as well.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. Members of council, I am Karen Burns, Director of Community Development, and I do believe the chief executive summed it up very well. Our intentions in moving this forward were to have all of us work together and, and work to a, a solution with a historic property that could be palatable to, to all of us. And unfortunately, those good intentions didn't, didn't go so well. I had believed that we would be able to work together with all parties to come to demolition, demolition sort of alternatives, discussion what we could have in place. Instead of that happening, it went to an all-out rally cry to, to fight at all costs. I, I apologize that the council was put in this position based on our, our good intentions and that we're coming all the way back around to where we are now. But I do believe when we have a structural engineer that looks at a property and gives us a report back like we have now that was solicited by the property owners, we have to take that into account and we have to respect what's in that report. And, and I believe that that's where we're sitting. But I also would like to say that I know the Historic Preservation Commission did meet last night and they did vote to approve the demolition. So that has already been done by the Historic Preservation Commission at their meeting last night. They took action on this and approved the demolition permit.
Thank you.
Really happy to answer any other questions anyone has.
Thank you, Director Burns. Any questions of the commissioners? Commissioners, Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. With that being said, with you said, I would make a motion that we can concurrent place on file Communication 2021-118 and allow the demolition of the Bruin buildings to proceed.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to concurrent place on file and, and it's been seconded. Anything on the question? Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I'm now going to roll in my frustration on these two situations that are upon us tonight. Great disrespect, excuse me, all the respect to everyone involved, but this is not working by no means. We have, I, I don't have the plan, okay? But the plan now we're doing is not working. Okay. We, I don't know what we need to do, but we need to roll something in here to do. I mean, Yankee Stadium, I'll say that 100 times. It's historic. They told the, tore it down, built a new one because it just made sense. I don't know if you guys have been to Bannock lately, you know, that's a ghost town. So I don't know, there's got to be a happy medium where we're making Butte, Montana great. But this doesn't work. So for the love of God, please, one of you smart people figure it out. And that's my frustration because this is, this is just, we're not going in the right direction doing this stuff. And with going back on the house is just horrible. Like, you should be able to tear that down next week. Come on, that's, we had to have some common sense and start doing the right thing. We as commissioners and whoever, we need to get this thing on the right track. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Commissioner Reardon, and then I'll come to Commissioner Shea. You'll be next.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. There again, listening to these deals and all that, I have to agree with Mr. or Commissioner O'Neil. I mean, I'm new at this and all that stuff, but I was just sitting here acting, say, as a citizen going through this process or a company or dealing with this process. And it seems like it's tainted with, with ordinance we're reading. And if this doesn't work, it's going to have to be to this. And then we go back to the HPC and all that. It seems like basically instead of working together different, the way the ordinances are connected and all that, there's no continuity to deal with the situations that are brought before us because there's no, there, we're treating every, every situation as a different situation. But in, in, in the initial application, and I agree with Mr. O'Neil again, is we just have to have a process that there's no wavering front because believe it or not, and I think everybody in this commission agrees, we see what's coming at us. We've been discovered and all that stuff and this, this is just the tip of the iceberg. So really legally, we should come up with something internally with the inspection department, with Mrs. Burns Department, with the, with the commission. I mean, everybody has to have a place, but it seems like right now everybody's going, well, this didn't work. Maybe we'll try this. And then they appeal it again and all that. We just have to have some continuity for this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reardon. I, I will say this to, to the point that you just made. We have been meeting quite often on, on this exact situation and, and there's no, there's no one size fits all within the historic preservation and how we go about things. But we can make it simpler and we need to make it simpler when people come forward to us and what. need to make it simpler when people come forward to us and what that process will look like. And I, I kind of refer back to, and this will age me, but when we first started learning how to use computers, we had a flow chart, if, then. And if something happens that diverts it, you gotta go to another direction. But it, we were able to, to give that kind of direction to the people with the very uncertain, various circumstances that can go there. So we are on this. We are going to meet diligently on this to make sure that the processes are in place. We just got to make sure that people understand them and where we're going. And, and we made an error, and by nobody's fault, that we, we erred on trying to, to allow more input, and we, we probably should have, right off the bat, invoked the safety exclusion, and it would have brought a lot of frustration from the historic preservation side. But it would have, it would have been over a lot sooner than where we're at today. And so we, we've learned from, from a mistake by no intent of anybody at all. And so what you, what you just talked about, Commissioner Reardon, you're exactly right. Commissioner O'Neil, the frustration, I understand it. So that's where we're gonna move from there. But I'll, I'll defer here to Commissioner Shay. She had a, she would like to have a question here or a comment.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Again, I'm not, not saying anything new. It's hard for me to express my frustration with the way the situation around the Blue Range has rolled out. I know that everybody is taking some accountability in it, and that is refreshing to see because that's one thing that we do all do very well. Two weeks ago, I was really hoping for some middle ground, and, and tonight's communication just doesn't feel like middle ground. And, and that's just sometimes the way the ball bounces. I realize that everybody is doing their best. I, I do think our processes need to be reviewed. Historic preservation is important to me. Our old biz, our old buildings, our historic district, everything uptown is, it's, it's a treasure. It's, it's an invaluable asset that we have. So I do think that we, we need to, we need to always look towards preservation when we can and when it's, when it's prudent. The, the situation had so much unnecessary drama and conflict arise from it, and it, it really could have been avoided if a safety exclusion had been brought forward in a timelier manner. It was clunky. I think that some trust has been damaged in the relationships that, that need to be, be trusted relationships in order to objectively seek solutions and balance regarding historic preservation. We definitely need to re, again, revisit the ordinances pertaining to it and see if we can bring back some clarity and cooperation back to the table. And with that, I, I would like a little clarification on Commissioner Fisher's motion. My understanding is that we do not have the power to authorize a demolition with this communication, and I was just a little confused by his motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shay. I, I believe it's to concur and place on file with, with Mr. Nation's of placing in the safety ordinance, or safety exclusion, I should say. Can, is there a clarification on this, County Attorney Joyce, that we need to have?
Mr. Chief Executive, with the public safety exclusion, just so everybody knows, that is a provision that's in the historic preservation ordinance. It's not in the dangerous building ordinance. It's in the historic preservation ordinance. And it is something that the city county is supposed to consider when looking at a building, and that's why this particular issue became a little bit muddled when it wasn't implemented at the beginning, because once you invoke the public safety exclusion, the Historic Preservation Commission does not have any further role, because what the language of the public safety exclusion says is that none of the provisions of this chapter, which is the Historic Preservation Commission chapter, shall be construed to prevent any action of construction, alteration, or demolition necessary to address, correct, or abate the unsafe or dangerous condition of any historic property or part thereof. When the building official and/or the fire department and/or the health department has submitted evidence in writing to the Council of Commissioners that such historic property or part thereof is unsafe or dangerous, and where the proposed actions have been declared necessary by such authorities to correct the said condition. In the event, any historic property shall be damaged by a fire or other calamity to such an extent that it can't be reasonably repaired and restored as determined by the building official or fire department may be removed in conformity with normal permit procedures and applicable laws. So what this provision of the historic preservation ordinance requires is, in this case, it's the building official, based on the structural condition of the property, and he's relied on a professional engineer's report to make that determination. He's advising the council that he believes that the public safety exclusion applies in this case. And I believe that the council should, its action should be to just acknowledge that they, they believe that they've been provided with written evidence in writing that the historic property is unsafe and dangerous. So I believe that should, really what the council is doing here is acknowledging that they have received sufficient evidence in writing that the public safety exclusion applies based on the representations of Mr. Nation as our building official, supported by a professional engineer's report. So I don't know that the council needs to concur. They can concur that they believe the public safety exclusion, that they have sufficient evidence that it should be, that they agree with, that Mr. Nation has provided evidence in writing. I also think the motion can be just to note that, that he did provide evidence in writing to the Council of Commissioners and acknowledge that that public safety exclusion was properly provided to this body as required by the ordinance from the building official.
A follow-up.
Thank you, Chief Executive, or Chief Executive, County Attorney Joyce, and Commissioner Shay, follow-up.
Follow-up. Thank, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher, County Attorney Joyce. Yes, I, I do, I do understand all that. I, my question was, Commissioner Fisher's motion was to concur with the communication and authorize the demolition. And so that was the part in the language of his motion that I was confused about, since the Historic Preservation Commission has already authorized the demolition. I, I, I would understand there's not many actions we can take tonight to stop it. So it would, just clarification on his motion was what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shay. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and I'm not going to dwell on this much longer. But, you know, I just want to play the devil's advocate. You know, we still live in the, one of the largest historic national land district, or historical landmark districts in the country, and I think we have a huge responsibility to make sure that they're, that they're overseen. I'm, you know, I'm frustrated tonight also. You know, I think everybody letting a little bit of frustrations out, but this is still a big event. I think it's a huge undertaking. We could probably make it better, but just remember, we do have that, that responsibility to keep these, this history in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorge. So going back to the motion that Commissioner Fisher had, I had that he had concur and place on file acknowledging the demolition permit, but I think it was placed on file. So after hearing from County Attorney Joyce, I think she was suggesting that maybe concurring was okay, but need to just note, or possibly, so I, I don't know if we would need a substitute motion for that commission, or County Attorney Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I think that the action of the council could be to concur in acknowledging that Mr. Nation has provided evidence in writing to the council that the public safety exclusion applies in this case. That's what he's required to do by the ordinance, and that is what he's done. So I think that Mr. Fisher's motion to concur with his notification is fine, but there, you aren't concurring in the demolition occurring. You're just concurring with the fact that Mr. Nation has provided evidence in writing to the council that the public safety exclusion is appropriate.
Okay. Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. Commissioner Callahan.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I guess I got a question for Mr. Nation. From what I understand, you didn't enter the building. Is that true?
Thank you, Commissioner Callahan. Mr. Nation?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Callahan, Chief Executive, Council of Commissioners. I have a report from a structural engineer that says that building is dangerous. That's kind of the last thing I want to do is go enter a building that's dangerous. I trust the structural engineer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Nation. Follow-up, Mr. Callahan? Or Commissioner Callahan, my, my apologies.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Gallagher. Well, my question is, this was declared dangerous building by the, the engineer's report. But as it was mentioned tonight, that several of us have seen occupants in that building daily. So is it dangerous to the public that's on the outside of the building, but it's okay to go in the building? And, and if that's the case, who is it dangerous to? If they continue to go in that building, how can you justify saying your information was accurate if they feel it's okay to go in?
Thanks, Commissioner Callahan. Is, we have a question to, to Mr. Nation. Is that, would you like that to go to Mr. Nation? Okay. Mr. Nation, can?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I don't, I don't know who's going in the building. I'm sure the posting says that, that people should stay away from the building. I would have to look into it, but I'm guessing that could be a violation of what that posting is because the building is dangerous. I'm not the owner of the building. I don't have the authority to let people in or not. As a building official, my job is to read the ordinance and act on the ordinance, and I have a report. I feel that my, my opinion on the building, based on that engineer's report, is conclusive that the building is dangerous. I mean, if you want to go in the building and, and the owner lets you, I guess that's at your own risk.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Nation. And follow-up, Commissioner Callahan, and then we'll go to Commissioner Fisher.
Thanks, Chief Executive Gallagher. You know, last, two weeks ago, we had the opportunity, we were invited to go look at this building. Mr. Randall told us, absolutely not. It's an unsafe building. I'm not letting you go in there. Four days later, we get a front-page picture in the paper of this photographer from Montana Standard, when he got a picture. Here we are, yesterday or today, we got a picture of Montana Standard of another picture, Mr. Hoffman in the board. So obviously, these people are still going in the building. There's photographs that they can sit. So that's our problem, is if it's a dangerous building, is it a dangerous building, or is it just, you know, it's not dangerous to the public because they're not going in. So you've got to define what a dangerous building is, I guess is what my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Callahan. Commissioner Fisher.
Call for the vote, please, Mr. Chief Executive.
Call for the vote. On where we're at on the, on the motion, and it's been seconded, was to concur and place on file. Are, are we looking to, to follow up on that, to concur and place on file, or under the advisement of the county attorney, would we, would we, would entertain a motion to concur on the, on the request from Mr. Nation, and then note? I want to make sure that we're clarified on this. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I think, in my opinion, by concurring, we're supporting Mr. Nation's thoughts, and by just noting and placing on file, we're just going along with the decision that's already been made. So whichever works is fine by me. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Fisher. I'm going to defer back to County Attorney Joyce.
I guess just to clarify the motion, I, I think that the action that the council is taking is to concur with the acknowledgement that Mr. Nation has provided evidence in writing to the Council of Commissioners that the public safety exclusion applies to this building.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. That would be my motion.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to concur about the acknowledgement that Mr. Nation's report is, is accurate on the dangerous building. Is there anything on the question? Have, we've already had seconded, I'm correct? It's been seconded, okay. Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I promise it'll be the last time I, I talk this evening. The ordinances that we have, if, if the, the HPC, and then we can work upon if, you know, there's, we got these beautiful buildings uptown. Trust me, I don't want to bulldoze them either. But the ones that are decaying now is, is, we need to start hammering these ordinances using the HPC or whatever you can do to make this happen. If somebody doesn't have buildings in order, we need to get more aggressive and not feel bad if they can't afford to do it. We just need to attack and start making these things go forward. That's going to preserve the bill. We need to start preserving the uptown buildings, not waiting till now to, to try to preserve it and try to block this stuff. So I know that's in your guys' conversations. I just had to really say this. Let's, let's fire up, get the ordinance guy out here. I don't know, Ed Randall, I think does a good job. I'm not brown-nosing to him, but like, let's get the tickets, let's start getting windows and all these stuff boarded up, getting the fines, getting some money in there, and maybe that'll help. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. And I, I will just add to that, with you, there has been multiple ordinance put into place, and, and we are meeting daily, and we are making progress on buildings that are exactly what you're talking about. And with the county attorney's office, community development, community enrichment, and the chief executive's office, there is exactly what you're asking about there. We just need to make it clear to the public exactly what our processes are. So with that, I will, any other comments? And one last comment, Commissioner Shay.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I'm sorry to beat a dead horse. But we are not speaking to the contents of the report. We are simply acknowledging that we received it. So I think that I would like Commissioner Fisher to restate his motion because we aren't speaking to the quality of the report. We aren't speaking to the contents of it. We aren't affirming the contents of it. We are simply saying, yes, Mr. Nation, we received your report. We aren't saying we agree with it or disagree with it. And, and either way, I can tell you that, that this is, this will probably go forward, but it's going to have to go forward without my support tonight. But I just want to really clarify with the county attorney what we're actually voting on and why.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Shay. I, from, and I, I don't know if, if County Attorney Joyce is still on, but I, I think that her, what, what she said to us was that we're concurring that, acknowledging that Mr. Nation's report was accurate, and we were concurring with it.
We don't know that.
County Attorney Joyce, can you clarify?
Mr. Chief Executive, again, what the ordinance indicates is that there, the public safety exclusion requires the building official, once he's made a determination that the building, an historic property or any part of it, is unsafe or dangerous, he's required to submit evidence in writing to the Council of Commissioners. That's what the ordinance requires. And so what I indicated that Mr. Fisher's motion could be is to concur in the acknowledgement that the Council of Commissioners has received evidence in writing from the building official, supported by a structural engineer's report, that this building, this historic building, or a part of it is dangerous and unsafe. So his motion was to concur with the acknowledgement that Mr. Nation has provided that concur with the acknowledgement that Mr. Nation has provided that evidence in writing that the part of that building is dangerous and unsafe.
Okay. So the motion is that they concur the acknowledgement that, that Mr. Nation has provided the evidence that this building meets the ordinance of the safety exclusion or this building is unsafe. Commissioner O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Then the, so if we're, if anybody's questioning Mr. Nation's from his report, the only appropriate way, we'd have to get another report to make it, to make it, because you guys, the, the historic, HPC already, apparently, we just found that out tonight that they approved the demolition of this. So we're not even all on the same page right here with the information. So if you have questions, you better get asking you guys, like.
Thanks, Commissioner O'Neil. Commissioner Reardon?
Thanks, Chief Executive Gallagher. Something real quick and I take on it, that might simplify things. It's with the decision of the HPC to allow the demolition, I realize it has to come through the commission. But basically, it's a done deal anyway. This is kind of just a notification to the commission that was, was handed down the line. So even if we had 11 noes tonight, whatever proposal we had or made or anything like that, it would be the same deal. It's, it's dinner's done, right?
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. We've already called for the question once. Called for the question the second time, which means we stopped the discussion.
All right.
And I agree with everybody, but we need to, you know, vote, so.
And I, I appreciate that, Commissioner Shaw. I think that we were getting clarification from the county attorney and then it got back into discussion. So call for the question. So commissioners, could you please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Commissioner Shaw?
Yep. Sorry, I'm brain dead for some reason. I have to change my vote. Yes.
And clerk, could you please record the vote? We're good?
Go ahead. Can I do it now or? Oh, okay. Okay. I need to submit it though. Okay, we're fine. We're fine. That's right. We have nine yea and two, nine yea and two nay.
Nine yea, two nay, and motion passes.
Thanks, Kathy.
Moving on to section three ordinances for second reading. Number one, council bill number 2021-01. An ordinance amending chapter 2.56 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code entitled Public Archives specifically amending sections 2.56.010, 2.56.100, 2.56.110, 2.56.130, and 2.56.160, and adding section 2.56.80, and providing for an effective date herein. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. You didn't have to read it, but you saved me from doing it. So that's great. Thanks.
Okay.
The next time I could do that. So at this time, I would move to place council bill number 2021-01 and ordinance number 2021-01 on second reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, so we have, motion has been could you repeat your motion? I'm sorry.
To move council bill number 2021-01 to second reading and pass.
Our motion is second reading and passing. It's been, it's been second. Anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote?
We're getting there. There we go.
And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
We're short a vote, so let's see who we're missing here. No? Who are we missing? Okay, we're doing a voice vote. All in favor?
All in favor.
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Eleven yea, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to section four, suspension of the rules, final passage. We have two resolutions, resolution number 2021-08 and resolution number 2021-09. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing both resolution 2021-08 and 2021-09 by waiving subsection seven of rule 36 of the Rules and Order of Business of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
Second.
So we have a motion to advance to the Judiciary Committee and it's been seconded. Anything on the question?
Actually, the motion is to suspend the rules to
Suspend the rules.
To avoid sending it to judiciary, but that's okay. We got it. Thanks.
Okay. All right.
Now we can vote.
We have a motion and second. Anything on the question? Commissioners, would you please vote?
Yeah, suspension. It has to say suspension.
Suspension.
Yeah, we're just getting the caption correct.
Yeah. That's because I goofed it up.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, we can all take a little break here for a second.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
Yeah, we're still getting the caption right. Thanks.
Oh, I got you.
Yes. She's typing furiously.
I notice my shirt's not dancing as much right now. So it's even gotten tired.
Don't move, because when you move it, it's, I don't know.
It's the camera. I don't know what's the deal.
Oh, goodness. Harry's coming, Kathy, all right?
Anyone like to change their vote?
Everyone vote. Here we go.
And clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Eleven yea, zero nay, motion passes.
Now we just go back to the two resolutions for me to read them finally. Okay?
Okay, so we go back to the motions on the resolutions now. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. We have resolution number 2021-08, a resolution amending the budget during the fiscal year in accordance with section 7-6-4032, Montana Code annotated, providing for an emergency budget appropriation, appropriating unanticipated revenue to the Butte Silver Bow Health Department from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, and providing for effective date herein. At this time, I move to place council resolution 2021-08 on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. To place on final reading, re, deemed fully read? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Just final, yeah.
Okay. So anything on the question? Commissioners, please vote. And clerk, could you please record the vote?
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Eleven yea, zero nay. Resolution number 2021-09, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Resolution relating to certain water system improvements undertaken in conjunction with the Montana Department of Transportation project, amending and supplementing resolution number 11-71 to create a subaccount within the surplus account of the Water System Fund for the purpose of providing security for completion of the improvements. So at this time, I move to place council resolution 2021-09 on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
So we have a motion and second, place on final reading and fully at upon, right?
That's, that's good. Final reading.
Okay.
Yep.
And so anything on the question? Commissioners, please vote.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Anyone like to change the vote? And clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Eleven yea, zero nay, motion passes. So now we go to public comment on any matter not on the agenda tonight. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I do have two rather lengthy comments to read in the record, and that's what we do. So, but in the meantime, I'm going to ask if we have any calls coming in. That would be my first. No calls. Okay. The first, the both, they're both from Dr. John, John Ray. The first one is while super fund attention is focused on the implementation of the consent decree for Uptown Butte, we cannot lose sight of another superfund site, the Montana Pole Plant. Currently, modifications to the remedy at the pole plant are under consideration by the EPA and Montana Department of Environmental Quality, which is the lead agency at the site. The pole plant, because of the dioxin on site, is in some ways the most acutely dangerous superfund site in Butte. I have had the feeling that MDEQ is hoping to rush the roll, the rollout of the ESD, explanation of significant difference document quickly and move on to construction issues. I say not so fast. There are still significant questions about the pole plant cleanup that have not been fully answered. In examining the modified remedy under the rubric of an ESD for Montana Pole Plant, the following still needs to be addressed, and we need to know if anything has changed since the last comprehensive public outreach from MDEQ. Number one, implementation issues. MDEQ estimates that it will take 50 years to remove all the petroleum-based pollutants out of that groundwater. Is this still correct? Number, let's see, there is money to operate the water treatment plant at the pole plant for only 30 years, given that the pole plant is a cash-out site. Is this correct? If so, given that the remedy implementation will take much, much longer than 30 years, how can we be assured that there is enough money to maintain and implement the remedy? What happens if the money runs out? So when will MDEQ get the money to operate the water treatment plant for additional 20 years beyond the 30-year reserve that it will need to operate to remove all the petroleum-based pollutants out of the groundwater? Two, presently, the water treatment plant is not producing water that can meet all of the water quality standards. What assurances does the public have that this will be remedied? And the water treatment plant will produce water that is in compliance with water quality standards? MDEQ says that we are close, but I don't know what that means. How close? When will standards be achieved? Are we looking down the road at another waiver of standards in Butte? If they haven't been able to meet standards in the past, why should we think that they will meet standards in the future? Number three, the contamination under the interstate poses significant risks to the cleanup of the pole plant. When and how will this be addressed? The state is very unclear in terms of addressing contamination under the interstate. Number four, dioxin is very dangerous. There are really no safe levels of exposure. MDEQ proposes to leave the dioxin on site unremediated with a cap. Caps in Butte have a very problematic history, and we must remember that the contamination in the rest of Butte outside of the pole plant is nowhere near as toxic as the threat from dioxin. The proposal is to allow recreational use over the dioxin cap. Is that wise? Is that protective? How permanent is the proposed cap lining? On a recent tour, I saw some of the present lining exposed to sunlight that degrades the cap. There are also unanswered issues regarding the long-term maintenance of the cap. Is there enough money to maintain the cap? Caps leave a threat in place and do nothing to reduce contaminants. Number five, what would be the future land use for the site? This is still very much up in the air. You sure don't want people running around the site. Number six, are the proposed stormwater controls sufficient to protect the cap from erosion? Number seven, a new plan proposes heavy reliance on institutional controls, which have proved to be problematic at other superfund sites. Will there be enough money to maintain these institutional controls? How and who will maintain these institutional controls? Number eight, this is a cash-out site with very limited money for cleanup and no practical source for more. Is there enough money in the pot to adequately clean up and maintain the site? Earlier, I raised the issue of insufficient funds to operate the water treatment plant for as long as it is needed. Number nine, in the past, MDEQ has not done a good job in keeping the public and particularly the nearby residents informed as to what is going on. Will that improve? How will that improve? Number 10, given the remediation protocol outlined in the new plan, odors emanating from the pole plant could again become an issue. What will MDEQ do to mitigate the effects of odors emanating from the pole plant? Number 11, MDEQ has had a spotty record in meeting the requirements of the ROD, that's the Record of Decision, for the site and water quality standards. What assurances can be given to the public that going forward, the pole plant will be in compliance? For years, we were left with the impression that MDEQ, that bio remediation would work at the pole plant. A couple of years ago, it was suddenly announced that bio remediation was being abandoned in favor of waste-in-place treatment forever solution. I do believe we are entitled to know the state's responses to the issues I raise above as to whether or not the proposed change to the remedy at Montana Pole will be fully protective of human health and the environment. The second letter is also from Dr. John Ray, and these are thoughts about where we go from here in terms of implementing the Environmental Justice Action Plan for Butte. I am heartened that we have commenced with our effort to implement the Environmental Justice Action Plan for Butte. I found last week's initial Environmental Justice Action Plan implementation meeting exhilarating. It is good to be started. We have momentum. We have commitment forward. We need to remember that the heart of environmental justice campaign is equity. That is, tailoring our actions and activities to the particular needs of the EJ, Environmental Justice Community. It is not equality in the sense of one side spits all. That is, as long as we do the same thing to everyone, we are okay. At the end of this message, I have included an extensive discussion of the meaning of equity and the difference between equitable treatment and equal treatment. Environmental justice is primarily an issue of equity. The fundamental question is, what is the goal of our outreach to the low-income citizens of Butte? And why do we want to involve the environmental justice community in Butte? Part of the answer is ethical. Part of the answer is a policy mandate. Again, I was heartened by the enthusiasm of those participating last week. First off, in a concrete sense, going forward, we have to determine what are the goals of this EJ action plan. I can see these goals falling under two headings. Actions that can be taken during the implementation of superfund remedies in Butte that are particularly directed at the environmental justice community. For example, the ARCO plan to use information from the EJ screen to help prioritize the RMAP cleanup is right on target. It is bold. It is innovative. This is to me, a very, very positive step in and of itself. And in that, it shows creativity in the implementation of environmental justice. Another would be consideration of the differential effects of exposure to the toxics of concern on low-income citizens in the next health study. Number two, community involvement outreach to the EJ community. For example, developing and disseminating messages that are tailored to the needs of the EJ community about what is going on in regard to superfund. Another example, outreach regarding RMAP that is directed to the EJ community. The goal would be to provide members of the EJ community information that they can use in a user-friendly format to protect themselves and their families and improve their quality of life. We need to encourage public comment and involvement that goes beyond just the technical. I doubt that many members of the general public are going to provide comments about some technical aspect of the implementation of the cleanup. We can't have that narrow a focus. People can ask and should be encouraged. I believe there's possibly a call coming in to ask questions and provide input about how what is going on will affect them. I know decisions have been made about how these decisions are implemented leaves much room for discretion and innovation. leaves much room for discretion and innovation. Again, let us not have too narrow a focus. Ask specifications. Assess best how to reach the EJ community, what mediums and media should be used. Here, we will need to reach out to organizations that work directly with low-income citizens. These groups are in the best position to answer the above question. It is of limited utility for us to design messages that we think are effective. We need to know what works for low-income citizens. In conducting community interviews, make sure there is adequate representation of the EJ community. Don't just talk to usual players, don't just talk to middle-class white men and women. Develop an EJ-targeted outreach program for our map, particularly in the BIPSU and the Greeley neighborhood in the Westside soils area. Josh's comments at our meeting along these lines was very encouraging and very welcome, right on. I know our map has conducted exceptional outreach activity. Do we need to update what is done? If a major stumbling block to the progress of the our map programs are recalcitrant landlords, what strategies and tactics could be used to reach them? At what point does EPA enforcement become warranted? Uh, I would also reiterate the following points I have raised earlier. Outreach the EJ community in Butte. Consideration in terms of epidemiological studies of the differential effects of exposure to the toxics of concern on the EJ community. For both, there must be a determination as to the goals of these activities. Is the goal informational? Is the goal impacting decisions? Given the plethora of community involvement plans that are being developed, most of which have an EJ component, coordination activities are critical for purposes of effectiveness and efficiency. Outreach, a lot of decisions have already been made as to the scope and mechanics of the cleanup. I think that the emphasis needs to be primarily outreach to the EJ community to provide them with information as to sources of help, such as the our map program, that they might want to utilize. Information needs to be disseminated as to what is available and how to access it. Services need to be made user-friendly for the EJ community, but decisions still need to be made. In addition, areas where the EJ community can impact decisions on the ground need to be identified, and equitable means of participating in these decisions must be provided by the decision-makers. For example, how can EJ communities be involved in the five-year reviews that are currently occurring? To the above end, we must decide, A, what information is to be disseminated? What is the most effective method of dissemination? By whom? How? Do we need new efforts? Do we need to modify existing efforts? For example, while participation in the EPA-sponsored update meetings that are held electronically have attracted nice-sized audiences, are these meetings the best way to reach those involved in the EJ community in Butte? How will coordination of effort be achieved? Who will be responsible for coordination efforts? Who reports to whom? I also am not clear as to what the MDEQ role in addressing environmental justice concerns. How best can we involve organizations in Butte that work with our EJ community? How best can we involve members of the EJ community? While I realize that privacy rights must be respected and that we don't want to public-target an individual or a family that's a member of this community in Butte, it's important that going forward, members of the community be involved in our activities. This could possibly be accomplished by means of utilizing groups in Butte, such as Action Inc. Differential effects of exposure to contaminants. This is longer term, but we need to start thinking about and deciding how consideration of the differential effects of exposure to the toxics of concern on the EJ community will be accomplished as we go forward with health studies, five-year reviews, et cetera. We also need to be cognizant of our successes. The our map program has focused on outreach to the EJ community. The our map program has been very successful, as evidenced by dropping lead levels in children. The brochure Be Contaminant Smart has had 14,000 copies distributed. Although we need coordination of all the nascent community involvement plans, we'll consider EJ issues. The use of the EJ screen by Atlantic Richfield in prioritizing our map cleanups is innovative and bold. The EJ action plan is a national model. We are not starting from scratch, we need to build on our successes. The following is my discussion on the difference between equity and equality that informs our EJ discussions. I got the feeling at our meeting that some still don't see the difference. Equity and equality, upon this point, all speculative politicians will agree that the happiness of society is the end of government, as all divine and moral philosophers will agree that the happiness of the individual is the end of man, John Adams. Equity, justice as fairness. What is fair in a particular situation or a particular case? That which strikes the ordinary conscience and sense of justice as fair, right, and equitable. Equity consists in a tendency not to treat with excessive inequality beings forming part of the same essential category. The category of those possessing the right to a healthy environment is in conflict with a category of income status. Equity is the crutch of justice. Uh, that's Perlman. Anyone who blocks access of others to public goods acts wrongly. Got one more page here. It comes into play when to exert equality would significantly harm another. Certain distinctions not anticipated by the rule come into play, like income. No general law can cover all cases. Interpreting the general rule to avoid unjust consequences, rules should not be applied mechanically. Under Article 4 of the Neapolonic Code, a judge may not refuse a case by using the silence, obscurity, or inadequacy of the law as an excuse. Reasoning demands that we cannot, reasoning demands that we connect facts with principles in order to make judgments. Equal and same are not synonymous. To be the same is to be identical, but to be equal is to have an equivalent degree of some specific quality or attribute. We can be equal in height, although we are not the same as people. Equality means being endowed with the capacity to pursue our individual and collective safety and happiness through politics, through the instrument of government. Protecting a right as, protecting a right such as the right to happiness that we all share may necessitate differential treatment of others that may prevent them, through no fault of their own, from realizing a right. Government is good government if it pursues the common good, protects the rule of law, and popular sovereignty. Sometimes a friend is more depressed or ill or anxious than another, deserves extra consideration. Does it matter, is the rule of the race are the same for everyone? Is one of the contestants can't run? Economic problematic when the goal of the race is to secure a basic right such as happiness. Equity, though just, is not legal justice, but a rectification of legal justice. The reason for this is that law is always a general statement, yet there are cases which it is not possible to cover in a general statement. It matters thereof where, while it's necessary to speak in general terms, it is not possible to do so correctly. The law takes into consideration the majority of cases, although it is not unaware of the error this involves. And this does not make it a wrong law, for the error is not in the law, in the lawgiver, but in the nature of the case. The material of conduct is essentially irregular. When, for the law lays down a general rule, and thereafter, an exception arises, which is an exception to the rule, it is then right, for the lawgiver's pronouncement, because of its absoluteness, is defective and erroneous, to rectify the defect by deciding as a lawgiver would himself decide if he were present on the occasion and would have enacted if he had been cognizant of the case in question. Aristotle, I rest my case. Thank you, John Ray. That's it, I'm done with our comments.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Well done.
I've earned every cent of my stipend, I'm sorry.
You absolutely did.
Thank you, John Ray, for your comments, they're always appreciated. Okay.
With that, we have no other public comment. Am I, nobody on the phone, okay.
We didn't have any, it just came up, the phone came up, so. Thank you.
Calendar, other events, please take note of, of when meetings are going to be. And with that, and thank you all, I will take a motion to adjourn. We can do a thumbs up, thumbs down.
I would move to adjourn. Got a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Unanimous. Have a great night, everybody.
Well done tonight, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.